Good evening. If I could have your attention, please. Okay, can we please have our city attorney report out?
Mayor, I'd be happy to do that. The city council met in closed session at its 6:15 session. There were two items on the agenda. The first item, 4A, was one item of pending litigation. They discussed that with the city attorney and gave the city attorney direction. Second item was one item of employee performance evaluation. With regard to the city attorney council did not reach that item during the 6:15 session. That item will be held over until the end of your regular session tonight to determine whether, given the lateness of the hour, you have time to continue with it tonight or whether you'll hold it over until another day. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vale. We are now going to close this meeting and move to our regular council meeting. I am going to ask everyone in the audience if you can please keep your voices down so that everybody can hear. And if everyone's talking at the same time, people way in the back can't hear, and the sound comes this way, so I can't hear, and my fellow council members can't hear. So, thank you for quieting down so we can get this very important meeting started. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the city council, May 16th, to order. May we please have the roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Fish?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Proton Man?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist?
I'd like you to please stand and join me in the invocation. Pastor Darrell Kelty from Community of Christ Church located 9468 Broadway will provide tonight's invocation. Pastor Kelty, welcome.
I'm getting the feedback, so can everyone hear me all right? Okay. This invocation we offer to our Maker and Creator. This we lift our prayer. We ask that your Spirit might be with us at this meeting today as we consider the business before the Temple City City Council. We do this because we know that without you and your divine guidance, we cannot fully recognize all the many situations and circumstances that must be reviewed, shared, and decided upon. You are the source of all truth, who in your love for us and for all creation seeks to guide us to create a better world and a community, not only for this generation but for all future generations. But we as humans can only see dimly that which is beyond our limited understanding. So, without you there to guide us, there's very little that we can do. We have no crystal ball to tell us which road to take, nor do we have tea leaves to give us guidance. But, Creator, we know that if you will allow us to accept your love and our love for our brothers and sisters to be our guide, then we are be able and rest assured that we are heading in the correct direction, even though we may not know where that direction will lead us. You and you alone know the future, and for this reason, this evening, we put on faith in you. It is for that we offer this prayer to you, that through your spirit we might be directed to read more clearly the future that you have for laying out for this community and in turn to be able to use that direction to build a better community into the future. This we ask in all humility. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We now have the Pledge of Allegiance brought to us by Troop 161. Scouts presenting the flags are Duncan Vergara, Christopher Do, Octavio Chan, Ethan Mo, and Jason Duong. Troop 161, will you present the colors, please?
May the audience please rise for the presentation of the colors. Color guard, attention. Color guard, front and center. Color guard, forward march. Halt. Please post the flag of the United States of America. Please post the California state flag. May all those in uniforms have their best peace of mind. May all those non-uniformed be assured of my presence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
Under the Pledge of Allegiance, two flag, of the United States of America, and two Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard, reform. Color guard, retreat. Color guard, halt. Color guard dismissed. The audience may now be out. Thank you.
We move to item five ceremonial matters presentations. There are none. If the council concurs, I'd like to pull new business item 10A out of agenda order as it is the intent of so many members of the public that are gathered here this evening, tonight, to hear about this item. Counsel? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so we're going to move that item up. New business discussion regarding proposed housing project at 6343 and 6359 Rosemead Boulevard at the Golden Motel site. First of all, I would like to thank everybody that is here this evening that has taken time from their busy schedules, doing homework with children, et cetera, and thank you for being passionate about this issue. Tonight, we're here to listen to your concerns, to listen to both sides, people who think this is a wonderful project and those who think that it might not be such a wonderful project. But we're here to learn, to listen, and to respect one another's opinions. So, for those of you who might have a difficult time seeing the protocols of the meeting, if we could have them put up. I'd like to briefly go over them. They are what is going to guide us to have an efficient meeting this evening. This evening, we have members of our sheriff's department. They are located across the room, and they will help us keep the meeting orderly. If the meeting cannot be orderly, they will gently and quietly go up and remind the group of people that are not being orderly to please do so. If you've already had the reminder and it continues, I will ask the sheriffs to escort you out of the meeting. Our intent is to listen, and we want to hear what you have to say, but we can't do that if it's not done in an orderly manner. I'm going to give you a perfect example. At our last meeting, we had a teacher from Temple City, one of our Temple City schools, and she came up to the podium and she graciously stated what her opinion was about the housing project. And she said, "It's very difficult when you're a teacher," and I was a teacher for 30 years, so I know this firsthand, and she said, "It's very difficult in your classroom when you have 50% of your class behaving, and then you have 50% not behaving. It's very difficult to teach." If we take that same analogy and we put it towards the meeting this evening, if we have 50% paying attention, following the rules, being respectful, and the other 50%, or even 40%, or sometimes even 20%, if they're loud enough, they can cause a problem that you can't get a message across to us and we can't give you a message back. So, I'm going to ask you to please be respectful. I cannot say it enough. I don't want to have anybody removed from our meeting, and I don't think anybody wants to be removed. But I am going to briefly go over the protocols that somehow keep disappearing, and I wish I could read Chinese, but I can't.
Peggy, can you? Thank you.
Okay, I think it's worth mentioning them. The time for public comment will be limited to two minutes per speaker. Please respect the opinions of everyone in the room. Unless it is your turn to speak from the podium, please refrain from clapping, making noise, cheering, holding up banners, flyers, posters, et cetera. The city council has heard many general comments on this item, and we are willing to listen to some more as long as it's done in a productive matter. Please consider not coming to the podium to simply agree with what another person has already said. That'll just not make for an efficient meeting. And they disappeared again, but...
Can we get a hard copy of the mayor?
Oh, okay.
And then there's just a couple more.
Following the protocols will allow the council to take the greatest amount of information from the public. So, can we have one big yes, and everybody gets the energy out, and we're going to listen? So, can everyone follow the protocols here this evening?
Yes!
Yes! Thank you so much. Okay. Mayor, I'm going -- that's me. I am going to call on our city manager, Cook, and city attorney for a presentation.
Mayor Sternquist, members of the council, thank you. This evening, you have the item before you related to hearing from the public and getting a report back also from the city attorney's office, which, from our city attorney's office, Greg Murphy will give you a briefing on some steps that have been taken since the last meeting and walk you through that process, which will both inform you and the members of the community.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Madam Mayor and members of the council. At your meeting of May 2nd, you heard many comments from the public regarding this matter, the matter, of course, being the Golden Motel site on Rosemead Boulevard and the proposed Mercy Housing project at the site. Legally, at that time, you were not allowed to comment back. The item was not on your agenda for open session, and without it being agendized, any comment you gave could subject the city to legal action. The meeting tonight was scheduled to allow you to receive new information from our office and from the community development department. Unfortunately, I have to report that we have no new information since your meeting of May 2nd. I will shortly explain the process that we have undertaken, the process that community development has undertaken, where the project stands, and why no new information is available this evening. To date, we believe that the process that has been undertaken by Mercy Housing and the county's planning division with respect to the Golden Motel site is completely inadequate. There's been insufficient public outreach, there's been an insufficient study of impacts on the community, and there has been a lack of information and materials given to the public. We are aware that after your May 2nd meeting, outreach began, but before that time, most people were unaware of the project. People found out about the project less than a month ago when required public notices were distributed. This led to understandable concerns from the community. The community raised those concerns to you, and you listened. I can also say, because you have directed me to do so, that prior to your meeting of May 2nd, during your closed session, you were briefed on the Mercy Housing development, and you gave our department or our office direction. That direction was to file with the county a Public Records Act request. The Public Records Act allows any person, in this case, a person from our office, to request publicly available documents. Any member of the public can also file a Public Records Act request. Our office did so on behalf of the city. In addition to the Public Records Act request, we requested that the hearing scheduled for May 31st be continued. Why did we do so? Again, to date, we've had no real substantial written information about this project. We need to study what the project is about. We need to understand what it is that the county is going to base its decision on, and -- and you've authorized me to say this tonight -- we will be filing a comment letter talking about the project and about the process that the county and Mercy Housing have undertaken. That comment letter must be based on facts, so we are waiting to hear back from the county. The county did respond late on Friday, and under the Public Records Act, they are seeking 14 additional days in which to provide documents. This is legal under the Public Records Act, but we feel it is misguided. Some of the records we've requested, we know are immediately available. These include the project application, any agreements in place between the county and Mercy Housing, other documents that describe and define the project. These are documents that should be subject to immediate disclosure, and we've replied to the county saying that we need those documents immediately. Concurrently, and based in large part on the outcry from the public, we understand that Mercy Housing has asked for a delay in the hearing. Yesterday, city staff was informed in writing that the hearing has been in fact delayed until June 21st. This may give us enough time to review all of the project materials and comment. If it doesn't, we will be asking for yet another extension so that the process can be fair. We will review the project documents, we will file a comment letter, we will appear at the county's hearings, and we will brief your city council when we have a full project analysis to you. But as I've said, the county is going to rule on facts in this matter, so we need the facts to be able to make our letter reasonable to the county. Tonight, from the public, our office is seeking additional facts. We understand the concerns that have been raised. We've listened to them, we've discussed them with staff and with the city manager's office, but we need additional facts. We are going to get facts from the county, but we're looking for facts from the public. If a member of the public does not wish to speak tonight but does have comments, facts that you can give us, the city clerk has the regular public comment card. You can fill out your comments on that card, give it to her, and tell her that you do not want to speak. We'll review that and we'll include it when we put together our documentation. I want to reiterate that the city council, our office, the community development department, and the city manager's office all believe that the way that this project has rushed forward has left the residents and has left local entities in the dark. We believe that the process is inadequate, and it cannot be repeated as the county moves forward with other projects in our area. We do value our working relationship with the county, but we do expect that our residents and the residents in the area be treated with respect and that the city be treated with respect because that's part of our mutual relationship. I finally want to say two things. Your comments tonight are very important to the city council, and as I've said, they're very important to our office. But what you say tonight is not the record on which the county is going to make any decision. Behind me on the screen, you will see contact information for people at the county, contact information for people at Mercy Housing. We now know that as of today, the county hearing is expected to be on June 21st. We encourage you to file your own individual comments with the county, to attend the county meeting the way that you're attending this meeting. You are important, and your voice should be heard. I will, as I wrap up at the end of your comments tonight, provide the city council with a process that we will be taking from here, and I encourage you, if you can, to stay so that you understand that process, understand what we'll be doing and what you can do as individuals. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I would like to say on behalf of the city council that we are not here this evening to take an individual position on opposition or approval of the project. We, as individual council members and collectively, need to do our own due diligence, and we need to ensure that we have all the information necessary that our city attorney has so eloquently stated that we need to have in order to make a good decision about next steps. We don't even know what those may be. So, tonight, I'd like to open public comment and have you share with us some more of your concerns. We have comments about the project that were heard at prior meetings. I would encourage you, if you have already spoken at a previous meeting, to give others the opportunity, who haven't had a chance, and maybe have some new information. So, if -- and if somebody comes up and says exactly what you were going to say, please just refrain or just say, "I pass," and then we can just go on to the next person. So, I would like to open public comment, and, oh, before that, I would like to call on county supervisor Barger's field rep or deputy?
Deputy.
Deputy. And he would like to read a statement that we received, I believe, yesterday or this afternoon from Supervisor Barger. Can you state your name for us, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor Sternquist, council members and staff. My name is Jared Degonia. I'm a senior deputy on behalf of Supervisor Catherine Barger, and with me is Chris Perry, senior deputy as well with Supervisor Barger. We both wanted to come here tonight on her behalf to share with you this statement that we have prepared for your council and for our staff, and we thank you for the opportunity for us to be here, and we want to thank the residents of Temple City for being here as well to listen. Mayor Sternquist and council members, as you are aware, the County of Los Angeles Department of Regional Planning has received an application from the affordable housing developer Mercy Housing for a veterans and homeless housing project at the Golden Motel in the unincorporated portion of San Gabriel adjacent to the city of Temple City. I thank your council in reaching out to my office and staff regarding the ongoing community concerns and comments you have been receiving in response to this project. The application is currently in their view process by the Department of Regional Planning and is scheduled for a hearing before the County Planning Commission on June 21st. It is critical that constituent and resident comments be included in the report that staff is preparing for the planning commission. Michelle Bush is the planner assigned to the application, and she can be reached at (213) 974-6383, or via email at mbush, B-U-S-H, at planning.lacounty.gov. Similar to an application before your council on any project or development, the need for potentially impacted individuals to participate in the process is critical to ensure all comments are taken into account at the planning commission hearing. Finally, because the application process for the proposed project may come before the Board of Supervisors, it is improper for me to take a position in support or opposition at this time. However, I commit to continue the dialogue between the city and the county to ensure the voice of the city and the residents are heard in the process. Thank you for allowing my staff to speak before you, and thank you for your service to the community. Sincerely, Catherine Barger, Supervisor, 5th District. I'd like to add two comments beyond the statement to share with you. One is the constituents, your constituents in the city of Temple City are her constituents within the 5th Supervisory District, and that is not lost on her. And to that end, I want to stress to the residents here tonight that the jurisdiction of this project is not before your council but before the County of Los Angeles, and we take that very seriously. And with that, I want to thank you for your time today. Mr. Perry will be happy to hand out the statement for you as well for council and for staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Before I call the first person up, we have about 70 speaker requests, so I'm going to limit the time to two minutes and ask that when you hear the beep, that you, wherever you are, you just wrap it up in like two seconds, three seconds, and then we can move on to the next. If you decide that you, somebody has already said what you'd like to say, or it's already been said three or four times, just say "pass" and we'll move on to the next speaker. The first person is Sam Magluin. Sam?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and staff. I'm Sam Magluin. I've lived here in Temple City since 1973. I believe that this is a win-win situation...
Sam, would you hold on one -- go ahead.
I believe that this is a win-win situation for both sides, but instead of presenting legal arguments or information, I would like to speak from a spiritual context. May I do that? The Bible says that God hears the cry of the poor. Many have been praying for housing for the homeless of our streets. Now, out of the blue, Mercy Housing is going to put up this housing for veterans and include it in the plan are the homeless of our streets. I believe there is only one reason that Mercy Housing chose this place, answer to prayers. I believe this is predestined by God and will happen. Not only will it happen, but it will also be beautiful. God will also use the sheriff's department to take care of our concerns. I am reminded of the true story of the miraculous staircase with the chapel of the Sisters of Loretto in Albuquerque, New Mexico, 1876. The order traveled from Kentucky to New Mexico to start a mission. They had the chapel constructed. The architect, builder, and carpenters erected a quarrellof inside the chapel. For unknown reasons, all parties involved in the construction forgot to put a staircase. By the time the mission was discovered, there was no floor space available to sacrifice for the staircase. The sisters prayed nonstop, and on the 10th day, a stranger appeared at the door of the chapel seeking work. He was a carpenter by trade. He had a solution to the dilemma of the sisters. He designed and built a spiral staircase that did not use available floor space. The finished product is a magnificent work of art and draws millions of visitors every year. It is also an engineering marvel. I am not comparing a staircase to a multi-dwelling low-cost housing project. I am just strongly... I am just strongly reminded that God answers fervent prayers.
Sam, just you wrap it up in about three seconds.
Temple City will be blessed if we help the poor of our cities. A robust city is one that has a broad spectrum of housing, from low-cost to affluent ones. Temple City can be that city.
Thank you, Sam. And just for the audience awareness, I'm just going to state not the address but just what city the speaker resides in. And Sam is a Temple City resident. I'd like to call Wendy McGrail, and Wendy is a Temple City resident also.
Mayor Sternquist, council members, I am speaking in support of the proposed development. I hear people all the time say, "Why doesn't someone do something about the homeless problem?" This project is a solution to homelessness, not a problem. The proposed development is not just a place for homeless people to live. Through this project, Mercy Housing and New Directions will be providing permanent supportive housing to qualified veterans and formerly homeless individuals. I think a lot of people have no idea what is meant by permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is a combination of affordable housing and support services designed to help individuals and families use as a platform for health and recovery following a period of homelessness, hospitalization, or for youth aging out of foster care. In the case of Mercy Housing, there will be nine case managers who will live on site and help each resident develop a specific plan to address their individual needs. Residents will be connected with healthcare, therapy, literacy programs, money management education, career development and job placement programs, life skills training, addiction recovery, and other needed resources.
Thirty seconds.
These services offer the residents the tools and opportunities they need to end the cycle of homelessness and lead productive lives as members of our society. Members of the council, if you look at the history of Mercy Housing, you will see they have extensive, successful experience.
Ten seconds.
With supportive housing, they are one of the best in the country and their communities have won many awards. Again, I stress that the proposed Mercy Housing project is the solution, not the problem. Mercy Housing gives hope to the homeless.
Thank you, Wendy.
And is life-changing. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyeng B. Jord Nabak?
Welcome. Good evening, and honorable mayor and city council members of the Temple City. I would like to address the controversial issues of the Mercy Housing project. And first of all, I would like to say I do appreciate the county's efforts to provide affordable housing for the homeless and veterans. And I do have my heart for them as well. But I do not think the project is right yet for the following reasons. I concur with the opinion of the Temple City Attorney, Mr. Murphy. And in addition, I want to add that the developer failed to do the 1,000-foot radius mailing and lots of residents who will be affected by the project were not properly notified. So, second reason is that moreover, the nature of property will be changed.
One minute.
From motel to permanent supportive housing, which will accommodate both the homeless persons and also the veterans. So there should be an environmental impact report to reflect the impact on the community, especially when you look at it and within two miles of radius of project, there are about 13 schools and the 13 school have enrolled about 10,000 students. So the developer failed to provide relevant data, facts, evidence to support their CUP application. We all want the developer to provide the evidence and data to support their negative environmental impact declaration as well. And the project should be delayed for the Mercy Housing to come up with a reliable and transparent vetting system to check out the background of their future residents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Steve Stafford. Steve is a Temple City resident. And Kyeng is a San Gabriel resident.
Mayor Sternquist, council members, mayor pro tempum, city staff. You know, listening to some of the comments about what's going to be done there, I see the county is trying to fast-track this and not look at the zoning. Those are apartments there. You have an institution, you have institution-type use for zoning. What they're doing right now, come to think of it, is illegal. They're trying to fast-track this without even having the right zoning there. That was zoned when I was very young as apartments. It wasn't zoned for institution-type use. And that's what they're proposing there, where they're going to have medical care there, they're going to have people there to keep security, they're going to have social workers there. That's an institution. That isn't an apartment complex. You just can't throw something in there and not change the zoning. You know, this really reeks of possibly favoritism towards Mercy. You've got to change the zoning. You can't throw something in apartments and not have it zoned for it. You change the zoning, there's going to be more requirements and the city might be able to use that to their advantage. Secondly, I think having a committee to deal with this is a good idea. You know, give more outreach to this because, you know, every day I look at this, it seems like it becomes more problematic and it's not going to work.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Karen Liu, Temple City resident. Is Karen here? Bonnie Tang, Temple City resident.
Good evening, mayor and all the council members. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak here. I live in Temple City since 2008. I came to the United States from 1997. I chose America as my, you know, home because I have American dream. We all have American dream. We think this is a democratic country. We think this is a country who listens to the majority voice. We think this is better country for our next generation. That's why I chose this country. When I came here, I went to study registered nurse. Now, I have been a registered nurse for 15 years in the community. I worked in Huntington Memorial Hospital and work now in a surgical center. I have an opportunity in my job to work with a lot of low-income patients. They all need help, I understand. So I really support this Mercy Housing project, but I'm just opposed to this project because they are in the wrong location. Because the patient, they have very low, because I know 30% of them have a mental problem and 25% have alcoholic and drug abuse problem. They need a long-term facility, long-term, to rehab them. So usually, the people, they have low, very low compliance for the drug. They don't take their medicine, I mean not drug. I mean, they have low compliance to take their drug. They need a lot of healthcare to support their healthcare, long-term problem. So I just very worry about, I'm a mother of three kids. I've got two twins girls and one boy. They all study very close to the Golden Motel. So how can I not worry about it? Because we're a mother, right? They have a petan baby in my tummy. When my twins daughter went in my commie, they had big problem. They have complications. I was told they would have eye problem, all the physical problem. But I still choose to, you know, raise them because we love them.
Thank you.
Because we do worry about their safety.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you. Dennis Tang. Dennis is... And Dennis is a Temple City resident.
Good evening, mayor, member of council and staff, city council. I am also one of the very concerned Temple City residents here. Same as everyone here, I feel sorry for those unfortunate people. And I am willing to help them, but we cannot sacrifice the safety of our kids. We cannot sacrifice safety of our family. We cannot sacrifice the safety of our community. Because this is talking about, this is a massive project, talking about 170 unit. And according to Mercy Housing, there could be more than 200 people living there. And not talking about, not only 200, think about, we all have social life. They have social life. They have their friends. They have their homeless friend. It could be 250, it could be 300. How can the city, how can Mercy Housing, how can the county control or to manage those visitors? Those visitors could be those not eligible for this program. Those visitor could be, you know, they don't pass the screening process. Those visitor.
Thirty seconds.
Can be, you know, any, anyone. So that's why we have a lot of concern on the safety. So that's why, I know Mercy Housing have, they claim that they have very strict screening process, but I don't think they have screening process for those visitor.
Ten seconds.
And also, you know, I want to ask them, do they have any rule or any restriction on those visitor around that area? Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. David Palmer. David? I just want to thank everyone in the audience for being so respectful of one another. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the past three years, several churches and concerned citizens have been working together in response to the needs of the poor and homeless in our community. This group is composed of Baptists, Catholics, evangelicals, Reformed Mormons, and even United Methodist. We've responded to these concerns out of the love of our hearts and out of deep conviction that all people are created equal in the eyes of God. We believe that God asks all of us to love and care for our neighbors even as we love and care for ourselves. We believe that the strength of the community is reflected in its capacity to care for the least of these. Even Jesus' primary mission was to bring good news to the poor, to bind up the broken-hearted, and He asks us to do the same. This belief is echoed in every major religion, and I am encouraged to note that the belief is also echoed in this very room even amongst those who oppose this project. I'm glad that they are my neighbors. It is out of these convictions that we began to make direct contact.
One minute.
With persons in our community who are experiencing homelessness, families, childrens, veterans, and individuals. Not only have we responded to the pressing needs of food, clean clothes, showers, and job training, but we have also been able to help find housing for several families and individuals who have been in need of these services through agencies such as Volunteers of America, Family Promise, Department of Mental Health, Department of Health and Human Services, Veterans Assistance League, and the Coordinated Entry System. But there are many individuals and families who have grown up here and call Temple City home who are not able to get off the streets because they're stuck on waiting lists, because the San Gabriel Valley is sorely lacking the capacity to respond to the needs of its own poor and homeless even though these programs are required by the state and the city's housing element.
Ten seconds.
We urge you, as the leaders of the city, to recognize the opportunity that is before you, to support this project that will open the way for 169 individuals to take that positive step forward to lead productive lives, and it will strengthen the capacity of the city to care for all of its citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Pastor Palmer lives in Temple City. Barry Ching? Barry, are you here? Yes. And Barry is a Temple City resident. Welcome, Barry.
Good evening, mayor, council members. So yeah, I live in Temple City and I have two kids. One of my sons is going to go to middle school next year, and we plan to have him just walk to school. But with this project, we're really deeply concerned and we want to maybe reconsider our plan. So I think others already expressed the concern about safety and a lot of strangers going to be around the neighborhood. So I think this project is going to bring just a change to the dynamic that we have. And so don't give me one that we are not supporting affordable housing. We do. We also give money to the one that in need. But I think the location and also the developer of this site is, I think, just going as a something quick and trying to make things happen. So I'm doubting the Mercy Housing, you know, whether they can really manage it well. So from the Glassdoor review.
One minute.
Glassdoor is a public site that the employee, former employee and current employee, who can review their employer. So Mercy Housing score below average, 2.9 out of 5. So it's, one of the most common feedback, negative feedback that quoted from Glassdoor is that Mercy Housing operate like a corporation instead of a nonprofit organization. So also, employees' morale is low. So this compared to a similar-sized nonprofit affordable housing.
Thirty seconds.
Organization, Habitat for Humanity, which has a much higher score. So I'm doubting whether with this project, the size, and also the economic impact, is this, they are coming to help people or they're coming to just make money?
Ten seconds.
So this is our concern. Safety is the main part. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Jill Shook from Pasadena. Is there Jill? Stephen Wong, Temple City resident.
Good evening, everyone. I come up here today to express my concern on the location of the Mercy Housing project at Rosemead Boulevard. My concern is not come from home value, but the absolute inappropriate location of the project. We were presented with the data and how successful the project in Almonte for comparison. However, as we all know, the scale, location, and the nature of the Almonte project are different than Golden Motel project. First, this project is not virgin-only but with other certain special needs tenants. The impact of this project is much bigger than the Almonte project, with many school around buildings and thousands of students walking between the school and home alone as their parents are all working parents. Golden Motel project scale is much larger than many other Mercy House project, so the impact will be much larger than the one in Almonte and other locations. With that, if Mercy project does build on the Golden Hotel location, all the surrounding cities should have the right, all the surrounding of the cities should have the right and longer time to assess the potential impact on their schools and neighborhood. Therefore, we oppose the location of this Mercy project. Based on the public information on the environmental impact assessment for this project, reported by the project owner Mercy Housing, the impact on the school and public services are either low or insignificant. However, it's obvious not an accurate assessment. With the last-minute neighborhood outreach, Mercy Housing give Temple City residents an image that they try to bypass our voices and get it approved without informing us. So it's absolutely unacceptable practice for us.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Sylvia Templer, Rosemead resident?
No, Temple City.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I live on Rosemead. Thank you for letting me speak. I live at 6236 Rosemead. And I wake up in the morning and I see the palm trees of the Golden Hotel. I fix my coffee, I open my blinds, and I gaze at the hotel. And it's had a lot of problems, about 10 police calls a month. And it's had a lot of problems, about 10 police calls a month. I was really excited when I heard they had sold the hotel. That's what I heard first. So I was excited because I considered a blight. And then I heard that it was sold for veteran housing. And I was very excited. And I looked up Mercy Housing on the internet. And two of the things I like most about it are the, it's the supportiveness, that they have services available in-house, such as wellness and health management, personal finance and employment services, nutrition and healthy lifestyles, classes, and vocational support. The other part I liked, as opposed to the Golden Hotel. I have tried to get a room in the Golden Hotel. It was $2,000. It was $2,000 a month to live at the Golden Hotel. I couldn't afford it. So selective residential placement, Mercy, in San Gabriel Valley, there are about 2,800 homeless people. There's only 169 beds that will be at Mercy Housing. They are going to be very selective, like a private school. They are going to interview people, they are going to do background checks, they are going to select the people that they think will succeed. They're going to choose from 2,800 people. And I think they're going to do a great job. I, for one, and I see Golden Hotel every morning, I raise two kids there. I've been in Temple City for 27 years. And I love Temple City. And I love the people here, and it's a great community, and I'm for Mercy Housing.
Thank you. Okay, we move to Ja. I cannot read the last name, but 15, on Oak Avenue. Is it pronounced J? Ja? Ja?
Am I the right Ja?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, my, my public speaking really sucks, but thank you, everybody, for having me here.
Probably best not to start with that line when you start public speaking.
Yeah, I just gotta, I gotta warn everybody. I'm just gonna ramble on a little bit, but, but I'm opposed to the housing. I mean, it, it's statistically significant sample here of our population, and most people in the room are actually against it in one form or another. It's easy to get sucked into this as an emotional issue. But look, I mean, it's, Mercy Housing is posing as a philanthropic organization. It's a real estate company. That's what they are. Look at their balance sheets online. It's a billion-dollar organization that's buying property everywhere. Now, as another gentleman mentioned, look at Glassdoor.com. Glassdoor.com is the leading forum for employers, employees to write their employer anonymously. So if you look at Glassdoor, the employees that are working for this company are miserable. Basically, senior management is basically there to collect a paycheck. The, there are two people, okay, yep, there are two people who are going to be monitoring over 170 residents. Actually, double or triple that because there's going to be three to five people living in each room. So, look, I mean, the fact is, there's baggage that's connected to these residents, right? Whether that baggage is alcoholism, whether it's some kind of past crime, whether it's drug abuse, there's going to be a certain amount of these people that are going to be repeat offenders in our community. There is enough crime already in the community. And I was a victim of crime, a victim of burglary, and the last thing we need is this compounded. So we need to look at this actual structure and say, is there actually any benefit to our community socially and economically for having this? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Did a good job, by the way. You know, before we go to the next, I just, not that I'm being, I don't know what's the word I'm looking for, but I am part of the council, I'm just sitting over here because of the light here in the middle. I just want, I don't want anybody to get the wrong impression that maybe I don't agree with them or like them. But I feel kind of isolated over here, but it's because of that light, so.
He's actually the third attorney in the room. And I, and I do want to acknowledge that Greg Murphy, put your hand up, and Eric Vale, put your hand up. And we have, attorneys are expensive. Tom comes free of charge.
I come free.
I will say. So Tom comes free of charge, but attorneys are very expensive. But we thought this was important enough to our community to ensure that the council be well-represented and the community be well-represented. So I just wanted to point that out. And I thank both the gentlemen for being here, even though they are paid very well. Susanna Chung, is Susanna here or did I already? Okay, Susanna is a Temple City resident also. Welcome, Susanna.
Hi, dear mayor and council members and other officers. Homeless to most people is what they see on the TV and newspaper. For me, my experience is firsthand. Five days a week, as I go to work in the downtown area, where a lot of homeless recite, gather, and wander. First of all, I would like to state that I have nothing against the homeless. I see them every day, and when it rains and when it's cold in the winter, I feel really bad. But the thing that I would just want to point out today is that they really have different lifestyles. Wandering on, I mean, laying on the middle of a sidewalk, standing still at the busy intersection, arguing at each other frequently, crossing the road at will, shouting at the pedestrian, talking to themselves are very common in scene. On occasionals, on occasions, homeless follow me for a long walk and getting into my face. Once a homeless man hit himself in the bush, made me scary, made scary sounds to scare me, and suddenly pop out from the bush that I, when I get close. I'm an adult, I can handle all this situation. But I would just imagine when we have the homeless people in our area, that when they, how can the young kids in the neighborhood can handle all this situation that I encounters? And there were hundreds of kids in our area. So you know what, I'm really, like, you know, I voted and I always like, like bring food to the homeless people, you know, on, on, you know, on, you know, in the downtown area where the courts are located. So I really think that they need help. But what I'm angry about is the Mercy Housing. Mercy Housing claims that they are here to resolve the problem. They are trying to clear up the Golden Motel messiness.
10 seconds.
And they are trying to improve our community. And they are, in fact, putting the safety of our children at risk, causing lot more other social problem that the Temple City and the City, Temple City's residents have to pay the expensive price. Thank you.
Thank you. Daryl Kelty. And Daryl resides in Rosemead, correct?
Well, I'm sort of adopted in Temple City.
And you're adopted in Temple City, yes.
Being born and raised there. To the mayor and city council. I stand before you with mixed feelings. I am a veteran, I'm a disabled veteran. And while I thank everyone who expressed their support, for the veterans, it sort of makes feelings to me because in that sense, they don't want me in their neighborhood if I was homeless. That somehow being a disabled homeless veteran will make me low, will make, will make property values lower. I might attack their children, or my appearance on their street might be upsetting. But to deny me the right to live a life is not fair. If this is denied, then my access to medical care will be limited, the job help for counseling will be limited.
1 minute.
Excuse me, okay. And I need this, if I'm homeless, I need this help so that I can live productive life. There's an old saying, but a very wise, where the evil will flourish when good people do nothing. I want a home to live in if I'm homeless. Remember that nothing will get accomplished when nothing is tried. And good intentions, no matter how good they are, do not keep out the rain, nor do they put foot on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Baileyan, Temple City resident.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
Council members, thank you for letting me speak.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Sure.
Or maybe pull that closer? Thank you.
The first thing I would bring up is, to me, there's nothing more important than the safety and the security of Temple City residents, especially the children, of course. Having said that, I'm the father of a kindergarten at Emperor Elementary School, very close to the proposed location. And I wanted to do a little more of a research and find out what Mercy is about and what they talk about and what they promise and what the reality is. And unfortunately, there seems to be a little disparity between the two. There are a lot of questions that remain unanswered. I'm not understanding how the screening process will go, what kind of support they will be given, how they'll be monitored on a regular basis. To me, that's very scary because there's a lot of unknowns. Now, 169 units is a lot, of course. We don't know what anybody's intentions are, and I, I'm not saying that's going to be the case with anybody, but, you know, it only takes one incident.
1 minute.
Sure. So there's a lot of unknowns. I don't know if, if, if individuals will be out on, on the streets, living on the sidewalks like I've seen when I looked up the, the other areas, the other properties that Mercy has. So just having said that, that all those unknowns that are there, the one thing that I do know is, for nine months out of the year, five times a week, two times a day, children are walking to and from school, hundreds of children. And to me,
30 seconds.
That is a huge red flag. And I hope that the city council, of course, understands these concerns and its voices on our behalf as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Galette on Emperor, Temple City resident.
That's Gallant, but that was close.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I oppose the Mercy Housing project. Get a little more specific than what I heard tonight about the students. Within two miles of the project, there are 10,000 students, there are 13 preschools, there are 10 public schools, and there are two private schools. Safety is my major concern with so many young students very close to a low-income housing project. What I haven't heard tonight spoken about very much is we currently have increasing crime right now with house break-ins right on my street in Emperor Avenue in Temple City. At least three to five homes have been broken into
1 minute.
Over three times in the past year. So I'll conclude by urging the mayor and the city council to please send letters, if you can, to the LA County Board of Supervisors notating the Temple City residents' opposition to the Mercy Housing project. We appreciate any assistance from the mayor's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, I thought we were going to go through without any clapping at all. Okay, so just, just remember that we're not going to do that. Michelle Durfee from Covina.
I'm pretty sure I'm not going to get any clapping. I'm from the San Gabriel Valley community. I'm here today as a concerned parent from the San Gabriel Valley community. And I, I know there are many other concerned parents here today. I am concerned every day for my children's safety in this crazy, crazy world. But I am more concerned that my two young daughters are growing up in a country and now a community that is teaching them that it is better to build walls than to build bridges. I am concerned that they will learn the value of selfishness over the value of selflessness as they watch the adults around them choose personal comfort over compassion. So I did not bring them here today because I am ashamed for us as a San Gabriel Valley community. Someone's true character is seen in how they treat those who can do nothing for them, like the homeless. What is the character of this community? How do we want to be remembered? The newspaper headline right now could read, "Local Community Rejects Opportunity to Help 169 Homeless Individuals Get Off the Streets." Please, council and community members, let's change that narrative. Let it read, "Local community welcomes those without homes with hesitation but with love." Let's choose love today, not hate, not fear. Let's together support the Mercy Housing redevelopment project to help those who can do nothing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to James Wong, Temple City resident. Is James here?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for this opportunity. So, uh, first of all, I want to say is, we do not discriminate homelessness and veterans. We not cold-hearted community. The reason, my concern is all about the location of the project. I mean, Temple City is known for a very peace and quiet, good school district, low crime, very minimal homeless. And it's a very nice community. And my life has been very quiet and peaceful until now we,
1 minute.
This homeless project is coming. So, and we're all like, and we're all, all got afraid. So we're talking about 5,000-plus students within a mile of that Golden Motel. And I really want you to consider this, our future of our nation
30 seconds.
Is at risk. So I'm asking, it's like we're asking our cities for help. And as a return, what we get from you is to say, it is beyond my jurisdiction. But I wanted to say, I'm not a politician. That walkway, that street, is our jurisdiction. So I'm asking you, I'm pleading for your mercy, just do us a favor to protect
Thank you, James.
The community and our children.
Thank you. I, I don't know if you were here at the beginning of the meeting, but the city did take some steps. And if you'd like to stay and speak to our city attorney, if you missed those, he'd be happy to speak to those again for you. Okay, um, let's see. Harold Martin Baldwin. Harold, is that in Temple City?
It is.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm, I'm a counselor and a professor of psychology by trade. I'm also a veteran with 20 years active duty and reserve experience. I have some familiarity with the effect of chronic homelessness, with mental illness, and with veterans. I was, I selected Temple City to live in in the 1980s. I've been here ever since. I've always been proud to be a resident of Temple City until last week, when I realized this was not the safe, quiet, nice community that I thought it was. It was nothing to be proud of. I saw an incredible level of fear, of ignorance, of hostility. And that's nothing to be proud of. I, I, for one thing, they talk about safety. Homeless people in the mentally ill are more likely to be the victims of crime than they are the perpetrators of crime. And I know I don't have much time to say everything that's in my heart, but the homeless people, and particularly homeless veterans, have suffered a great deal. It's unimaginable for most people. I was, I was for this project. I think the Mercy project is exactly what this country needs, what society needs. But I don't think Temple City is the right place. These homeless people have suffered enough without having to come into a community where there's such hostility, such anger, such heartlessness. I don't think we need to add to their suffering by asking them to live in a place like Temple City. I know I wouldn't want to be a homeless person and have people view me as a child predator, as a criminal, as a, as a person with, with bad associations and, and a serious record, and as a danger to anyone. I wouldn't want to live here if I were those people. I think they deserve a better community than Temple City.
10 seconds. Thank you. We move to Sandy Wong. And Sandy, Sandy here? And Sandy, Sandy here? Sandy, are you a Temple City resident? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak here. I'm just speaking for myself, actually. I lived in Temple City for about fourteen years now. I moved from Monterey Park. The reason I moved here initially was a fear of how my kids growing up there, not educated well or stuff. So, long story short, I moved here to a beautiful city. I have no, nothing against any homeless or anybody. As a matter of fact, my kids are graduate now, some of them in college, they have been donating, and every year, to the homeless in downtown. My son have even bought food, just to pass out food during Christmas time. So, my question to everybody here, opposed, against, or whatever, what have we done? Have we donated, even though, of course, it's my fear for the, you know, veteran or homeless here, because we cannot control too much of the crime, but that we have donated some money or donate food, whatever we can. That you guys are against or not against, have you done something like that to support in any way, besides, you know, against putting them here or not? I agree, in other words, myself, right now, I'm here to support and oppose this project. Please don't let it happen here, because it will destroy, to me, it will destroy my fear of my kids. They really feel bad for the homeless in downtown right now, but if something does happen here, they will think of it differently.
Thirty seconds.
You know what I'm saying? So, anyway, I hope my message gets through. What have we done? We can donate some, in any help we can, either money or food, in a different city, but not in Temple City.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Tonya Hernandez, Temple City resident.
I basically can't say what I want to say in two minutes, but almost everybody did for me. So, my son was born in San Gabriel Hospital, I've been in this community for almost all my life, from New York City. My ex-husband and I, we got a divorce, he stayed here in Temple City, and I moved to Whittier. Nobody mentioned this in the city of Whittier. I live there, my son and my husband lives here. My, I'm a, I work for the East Whittier School District, I'm a teacher, a kindergarten teacher, and my coworkers started kind of passing around, hey, did you hear about Temple City? This issue is getting out. What you see here is just the beginning. Just the beginning. Look at all these people. It's not going to end, and there will be a fight. The city of Whittier already started putting together a picketing committee. I've been initiated
One minute.
To kind of speak for them and try to organize that. But I'm here today to tell you that I live in Whittier, and it's already reaching Whittier. HUD oversees the housing committee. Mercy says what they say they're going to do, they talk the talk, but they don't walk the walk. Insufficient funding has led to problems in public housing committees, rental units are commonly outdated or in need of repair.
Thirty seconds.
According to the National Housing Institution, a low cash flow contributes to understaffing by the Housing Authority Management. Mercy has been rated, the low management, please, everybody do the research on Mercy. I am a daughter of a United States Marine.
Ten seconds.
I have very much compassion for my veterans, my father, and for the homeless, but this city is already populated.
Thank you, Tonya.
Rosemeade Boulevard is not the place for this situation.
Thank you, Tonya.
And it's going to get worse.
Thank you, Tonya. Joe Wu, from Baldwin Park. Michael Ping, Temple City resident.
Mayor, Councilmen, and gentlemen, good evening. First of all, I want to say I welcome a very well-managed establishment to help homeless and veterans. However, I'm really concerned at chronicle homeless and dishonorable discharged veterans who are going to move in our neighborhood. Never before has a homeless housing project like this one been proposed in such an area populated with so many schools, from elementary, middle, and high schools. Who is going to monitor the operation of Mercy Housing Project? I'm not comfortable with the ability of the Mercy Housing Organization. I understand you mentioned in the last City Council meeting that you don't have the jurisdiction of the project, so I understand that, but it doesn't mean that you couldn't do anything for us. I understand the City Council had done a lot for us, but I just, we are not asking you to do any legal action for us, but we are asking you to do something from political perspective and by a city leverage, as I believe the city has a much more bargaining power than us. We need your help. We need to help us to have our voice heard. I believe you have a better and efficient channel of communication between governmental agencies. We have only voice, but I believe you have a stronger power than just voice. If there is a possibility that the city is not well-managed, the answer is yes. The possibility is always there, and the possibility will expose a resident under an unknown risk. I don't wish the city becomes a less livable, you know, society because of the possibility of the unknown risk. The interest should be balanced. The safety interest of more than ten thousand students
Ten seconds.
In a two-mile radius should not be outweighed. Temple City doesn't have much resources in medical facilities, legal enforcement, and healthcare.
Thank you, Michael.
All right.
We move to Laura Rathbone. And Laura, are you a Temple City resident?
Global citizen.
Global citizen, you move a lot.
Yeah. Laura Rathbone, outreach activist for the homeless. I come to council meetings when I see things like this on the agenda to inform the community. It's on a lot of agendas all over the county. I've actually been on a tour of the permanent support housing, and it's amazing. You guys need to go there, you'll change your minds, you can talk to the residents. Go to your neighborhood council meetings, speak with the homeless liaison, and you can arrange a tour, and it will change all your minds. Also, I see children out there holding signs against helping our veterans. What is this teaching them? Fight for your country and die alone on the streets? If you respect our vets, then you should welcome them here.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that, just be patient, we have seventy-five speakers tonight, so if your name has not been called, there's seventy-five of you, so, we're doing the best we can.
And we are number twenty-three.
Yeah, so, that's what I'm saying, we're just doing the best we can.
Kenny Lau, Arcadia.
Hi, thank you all, the City Council and members, to address our issue and concern about this affordable housing tonight. Like many other families that are here tonight, some of our major concerns and worries are all about the child's safety. I have two children go to the school here in Temple City, one in elementary and one in high school. My wife and I moved here because of the safety of Temple City, the great school district, and the reputation that builds over the years. Now, because of this affordable housing project, many of our residents are feared that everything will change. Now, my questions to the council are, are there any kids under the age of seventeen that will be staying in the facility? And second, if so, are they gonna go to the city of the school in Temple City?
One minute.
Does our school district have any plan to deal with this? I mean, we are talking about possible special needs student. What is the protocol if something happens? How will you address this to the teacher, students, and parents? Is our school district required to spend budget to take these children? And what will you do to educate the children's safety and coordination with the law enforcement?
Thirty seconds.
If this project does move forward? Do you guys have a meeting with the school district about all these issues? I think our City Council members need to take our questions seriously and see the huge potential problems that not only could threaten us, but the city of Temple City as well.
Ten seconds.
Because if there's anything happens to our kids in Temple City, one case is too many. Temple City residents will reserve the right
Time.
To sue the city of Temple City as a result.
Thank you, Kenny. Thank you. I'm going to call a few, if you would just line up in the center, and then it would move more quickly. Richard Chia, Kareem Bana, Leepi Shimrata, Bessie Ho.
Can you announce their name as they come up then?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Matthew Avania. And the first person is Richard Chia.
Yeah.
Richard?
That's me.
Welcome.
Hi, just give the small talk. So, we are twenty-third year in here as a resident. So, let me just, and my background is doing the finance, so, let's deal with some numbers. So, all those numbers is I caught from the Google.com and also the KTLA and LAPD. So, that, what I'd share with you is that I'm not discriminating for any of the group. And then, unfortunately, for the homeless people, thirty-eight of the homeless people, they have addicted alcohol, another twenty-six addicted drug. And then, for the homeless veteran, I'm sorry, that seventy percent of them is suffering abusive drug. So, for those, those people with such of the medical and the mental problem, and then, I'm not sure that you already did your work for the planning. So, what are the planning for, and you mentioned, since you mentioned due diligence, that's what I familiar with. Please have this done and deliver that, and the public, to everybody regarding about those numbers. So, if we're talking about this, I would say shy of like one hundred-something of those people with abusive drug, and then, consider about that, that they will, it's not will be a facility for the treatment, it's not. So, consider about, they are doing something like a self-detection, and then for that, the success rate, zero.
Thirty seconds.
Until now, I'm sorry, that's zero. You're talking about like three weeks, that's zero. And then, they are just like a magnet, that's a huge market, so who will be coming? Bunch of the junkie, ah, sorry, I'm sorry, should use the word like drug dealers.
Richard, thank you. Your time is up.
No, you didn't mention me, the one minute.
It's two minutes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Richard.
But, but, okay, the last word is, the drive force is coming. If you are talking about
Hi, Richard.
You allow me to
Richard.
To set out the
Karen, would you move up to the podium, please?
The Patriot Files in the gas station.
Thank you.
And then, that's what you are doing.
Yeah, thank you. Just a reminder that we need to be respectful of the time. I also would like to suggest that if someone has already stated your opinion regarding the same issue, regarding safety, some of the things that we have up there, maybe give someone a chance to move the meeting along that hasn't, that you're not repeating the same concern. So, Karen?
My last name is Bana.
Say that again.
Karen Bana.
Okay, Karen, Kareem.
Okay, I'm here as, for support for my coworker. We both work at the county hospital down the street, and
If you wouldn't mind talking into the
I'm sorry. I'm here as support for my coworker, who
Pull it, pull it a little.
Lives here in this community, I live in Cerritos, and I came from work, and to support her here. And I, when she first told our coworkers about the situation, they're building a homeless apartment dwelling in her community, everyone was highly concerned. I decided that I would take my time and come down here and to speak. And I have a primary concern as to why? Why would you put something like that in the midst where there are children? Why would you do that? There has to be other places throughout, Los Angeles County, and Los Angeles County is very large, that you could have put that place, but I don't understand why you would put it here. Understanding from what I'm reading, and I had to pull it up at work as well, to understand what Mercy was and everything, they said a lot of
One minute.
People have drug problems, a lot of people have mental health issues, so, and they're also homeless or scared growth, some of the people, they bring them in to help them and get back on track and everything. But understandably, that they come with baggage, and with that baggage, there comes a lot of other problems, because sometimes, some people have other people follow directly in, then you, now you have drugs in your community, you have
Thirty seconds.
Higher crime in your community, you have assaults coming to your community. If your ratio of assault is very low, you might have a higher impact of assaults within your community. So, I just don't understand why you would want to put that in this community. And I really feel that there are other places the place could went.
Thank you, I just want Thank you. Ten seconds. To clarify something for you, that we are not putting this in our community. It is, again, not in
Yes.
The jurisdiction of Temple City. So, that question can be referred to the county of Los Angeles, the Planning Commission, they would, I would suggest that you ask that question of them, but I just wanted to clarify that for you. Thank you. Um, is it Leepi, or?
Leepi?
I think I said it right the first time.
Leepi Shabkata, I'm with the Department of Health Services, Housing for Health, and I'm actually going to give my time to my colleagues behind me, so they can say their words.
Okay.
Good evening, my name's Yvette Kelly, I'm the president and CEO for New Directions for Veterans. Born and raised in Los Angeles, a thirty-year Army veteran, active duty. I wanted to say that I've, I know Mercy Housing, we've been in a project with them for several years now, providing great housing opportunities for veterans, and we've had no problems whatsoever. So, we continue to look forward to working with Mercy Housing.
We're going to save four minutes somewhere on this. I'm Ed Holder with Mercy Housing California, we're here primarily to listen tonight, so we thank you for holding this venue and allowing us to listen for the respect that the audience is showing, I appreciate that tremendously. I would echo what one of the individuals invited or encouraged people to do, which is to visit Almonte Veterans Village. I would encourage the council, I would invite you to visit and to see
One minute.
And to talk and to touch the building, to see the building, that's been there for three years, and for community members who might be wondering, might be questioning, maybe not sure, maybe wanting to see what it really feels like, to join us. Thursday, we have our next tour, it's going to be at six-thirty. Golden Motel, fax.org does have information about that, we'll be providing transportation if folks would like that. They're, of course, welcome to meet us there as well, we want to make it a safe environment. Do you think that just visiting and encouraging you to visit
Thirty seconds.
Would give us the opportunity to, and set, I think, a good example for really doing all the due diligence and seeing what permanent supportive housing is really like? So, again, thank you for letting us be here.
Mr. Holder, can I just ask you a question? Councilmember Fish and I were both at that grand opening of the veterans' housing in Almonte, at the request of our colleagues on the City Council invited us to come out, as they do for most events that
Sure.
Cities invite neighboring cities to come for grand openings, skate park in Rosemeade, et cetera. But I just want to let people know, there is, the occupancy at, in Almonte is forty, is that forty veterans?
Correct, yeah.
Right, and so, I just, if they, if, I encourage the residents to go out, but I think that is one of the things that needs to be, they need to be reminded, that it is a much larger facility for housing here and on Rosemeade, correct?
Sure, and I think what I would say is that, what we have found is that supportive housing absolutely does scale, right? And so, you provide more resources to attach to each individual. So, the scale, while it is smaller, the impact, I would say here, could be larger. And I think that the city would say, if we could do another forty units right there, they would probably say that. I'm not quoting them, but the success has been there, and the results have been there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I think that's all your time.
Thank you.
Yes. Bessie Ho?
Do I need to talk longer than two minutes?
Bessie Ho?
Yes, yes.
Oh, let me explain, I'm, that's a good question. The lady in the front row asked why he got to speak longer than two minutes, because they, there were three people, and they, all three filled out a form which allowed them six minutes, but they chose to only four minutes. But that is, that is, that is, that is the opportunity that is available. If, if you had two more people fill out a form, you could each speak the two minutes. So we're not, okay. Thank you. Bessie, would you continue please?
Honorable mayor and city officials, thank you for giving me this chance to, to speak here. I don't, I, I'm not opposing or, 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 or supporting, but I do have questions. Uh, last week on, uh, May ten, when during the meeting, uh, at the church, somebody asked about the selection criteria of the residents for this project. And surprisingly, they didn't have an answer then. So, and it was promised to be posted the next day on their website. From that day on to today, I don't know how many phone calls I made. I tried to find out information, but nothing was available. When I called Michelle Bush, all she said was, I called her so many times, I think she knows me by now. Anyway, she kept saying that they are just an applicant. I don't know anything about that. And I thought that was outrageous. But anyway, I finally got the phone number. And guess what? The phone number is so filled with messages that it doesn't take anymore messages. And I think that is how they block us from finding out information. But anyway, thank God, I did find them the information. And I'm going to read to you what the selection criteria is. And in case you want to know, to go see for yourself, I gave to Mayor Cynthia the website so you can call Temple City. Okay, if you would be so kind to apply that. Okay, there are three categories of conditions that the selection criteria. I'm not talking about the first two, it was just about homelessness. But the third group really got me really, really upset. When we are talking about mental illness, there is the word serious mental illness. Before that, the word serious really get me worry sick. When you say that you can take care of...
Bessie, thank you, and I want you to know, Bessie, that we have our, um, I forwarded your email today to our city manager so he can make that, um, number available for you.
Great, no, to everybody, I have the number.
To everyone. So it could be, just call City Hall, they can make it available.
Yes, please, thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Okay, I just want to clarify also, our city clerk said that whenever I stop to ask a question like of Bessie, that she stops the clock and you do get your full two minutes. So she, I just want to clarify that for you. So, if I ask a question or another council member did, that time, that clock is stopped and then it's restarted. Thank you. Let me call the next people that, behind you. And I think once we get to thirty-five, we'll take a break. Okay? So it is, Linda? Orin? Linda here? Okay. Michelle Xiao? Matthew Oncamino Real?
I'm Matthew.
Oh, oh, you're the first one?
Yes.
Thank you, Matthew. Feng Liu? And did you fill out a card for her?
Uh, yes.
He has it? Do we have it? So here? Okay. Thank you. And Steve Gallit? I think Steve already, maybe he filled out two. And Peter Lamb? Matthew?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, I live in the unincorporated portion of San Gabriel, so I'm actually just less than three-quarters of a mile away from the proposed development. I'm here this evening along with hundreds of my neighbors to implore the city council to send a letter to the LA County Board of Supervisors, specifically County Supervisor Barger, to express their profound opposition to this development. You know, earlier in the meeting, Mr. Murphy mentioned the absence of facts, okay? I, I live literally around the corner from the proposed development. I did not hear about this proposed development if it wasn't for my neighbor across the street who grew up in Temple City. So this is why you have folks here expressing fear. They're not here because they're ignorant or against the homeless or veterans. They're here because they don't have any facts. What is missing from Mercy is the vetting process. How are they screening these people? Okay? Let's present facts. The, according to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, twenty-five percent of homeless folks have a form of substance abuse. Thirty percent of them suffer from some form of mental illness. So you add thirty and twenty-five, that's fifty-five percent. Earlier...
Thirty seconds.
Earlier, you, uh, there was a speaker that mentioned the, the veterans housing in Almonte. The veterans housing in Almonte, has anyone asked Mercy if there are any schools within a one-mile, two-mile radius from that facility? Are there, is, is the scale of that development the same scale as the one that's proposed in the, um, the, the Golden Motel? So, again, these are questions that Mercy has not been very forthcoming. I'm one of those folks that did not know about this proposed development. Thank you.
And I would encourage you to please ask those questions with the contact people up there also.
I will.
Thank you. Linda? Orin?
Yes. Uh, I'm also from the, uh, San Gabriel area, unincorporated, and I thank you all for letting us all speak. I am opposing this. The first thing that came to me about this, I see red flags all over this, just massive red flags. And I'm wondering, why are they bringing, why is Mercy bringing these people to our community? Why here? Why aren't they bringing it to Beverly Hills, Del Mar, Pacific Palaces, Orange County, Laguna Beach, Laguna Hills? No, they're bringing it here. Why is that? I'm asking. It doesn't make sense to me. Why are they bringing it, especially when you're surrounded by so many children, so many schools? It's scary. And we have, I see children all the time walking to school, little guys and little girls with their parents or, or a group of them. And they're going to be walking across, all the schools are around, there's just so many schools. And these schools, I mean, I, I know they want to protect their children, the parents want to protect their children, but these people that are there, I don't trust them. I'm sorry. I know they vet them, well, did they vet them in San Bernardino while people got killed? What kind of vetting did they do there? Also in Orlando, Florida, what kind of vetting did they do there? People got killed. I, I'm just wondering, why is this happening to us? These people that they're bringing, they're not lawyers, they're not teachers, they're not scientists, they're homeless. And you wonder, why are they homeless? You asked your question. Well, they're mentally ill, that means they can't keep a job, they can't pay their bills. The families, why don't they live with their families? It's because they don't want them. There's something mentally wrong with these people. And I feel so sorry, I come from a military family, from my father to my uncle to my brother to a lot of my friends. I'm not against it, they just should not be here. It's a wrong place. There's plenty of places around outside in the county to facilitate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Michelle?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I would like to say that a lot of people don't understand the messiveness of this project. A hundred sixty-nine units is what they said in Mercy. But it could be over two hundred, three hundred if the partners comes, the visitors come to stay there. So this is something I'd like to clarify. Second, um, a lot of people associated with people against this project thinking that we are hotness, we're cruel. We like to say that this is a democratic country. We like to opinion our voices. And whatever we oppose this is actually the location, the safety of this place. Okay? I'm living in, um, the unincorporated area for more than twenty years. To say that Temple City has no jurisdiction with this project, I would like you to reconsider. Just like my kids going to Temple City schools, when they, when the people living in this building, when they step outside the building, they become part of Temple City. Just like my kids going to Temple City library, parts, all over the place in Temple City. We are so closely tied to this, uh, Temple City. So when this project is done, it will become forever be tied a problem to Temple City. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Feng Liu? Oh, you're on the already spoken pile. Michelle? Okay. Sorry, we have a lot of these.
Yes, I don't want to waste anybody's time. I want you to direct us, yes. I want you to direct us how to stop this project. Help us, okay? Help us to stop this and also help those people that are for it. This is my thirty second. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Lawrence Chow, um, Camelia Avenue. I've been to all the meetings, including the Mercy Housing meeting. Um, what I come up with is this a whole bunch of arrogant people. They're not, the first business is not to help people. They totally disrespect all the community around here. They come to the meeting with no answers, not speaking to us, treating us like, like second-class citizen. And let me tell you how deceiving the, the data that I got from their meeting. Our hundred eighty unit, probably like only six of them are for veterans. And they say that they're going to have a ratio of one to twenty case manager, uh, one case manager to twenty occupants over there. That is a very high ratio. That mean high, that mean the, this very low number of occupants to each case manager. The only people who, who will have this type of treatment, according to my information, is people who are seriously sick, seriously sick in their mental health. They do not belong to the neighborhood. The government should put them in an institution, hospital, to rehabilitate them and so they can be back into the society. The entire Almonte fiasco, the veteran housing, good for them. Next to the police department, more power to, to the people living there, they got more protection. But they are so deceiving, using this as an advertisement to advance that, what they're trying to put up in our neighborhood. This is not a hundred percent veteran, uh, housing here. They're mixing with at least like sixty percent of the sick people around us. They have no business in our community. I feel sorry for them, but this, we are not running a hospital here. We are not providing a ground for the institution for the mentally ill people. We live, I live here for twenty years. I love it. My son's growing up, he's going to be to the school very close to the center too.
Thank you, Mr. Xiao.
Feng, Feng Liu? Uh, yes, good evening. First, I need to make clear, my friend Junjie Xu, she has two minutes, she would love give to me.
You can speak to her for...
Thank you so much. I'm a lawyer, like this gentleman, I come here for free. I'm not...
Okay, we won't hold that against you.
Okay, that's good. I'm not coming here for, only come here free. I also cook for homeless people for free too. On Saturdays, whenever my schedule allow me to do so, I cook for them, I talk to them, I even eat with them. I love homeless people, I respect homeless people. They are human beings like everybody else, like us, standing here. We, we are all human beings, I love that. But I still don't think this is a proper location to put homeless shelter in Rosemead Boulevard. Boulevard, there's, I have a piece of paper, there's twenty-five schools in the, within two miles, few schools just next door to the shelter, the location. There's told like seven, seven thousand nine hundred students going to school there every day. Also, I'm not only cook for, cook for homeless people, I also send food to homeless people. I can't find enough homeless people to send my left, leftover food. I drive to downtown LA, give them my leftover food. Why I give them food? Many times, they don't want my food, they want money. Ask them, why don't you guys want my food? They say, oh, no, I get enough food from homeless shelter, I have shelter, I don't want food, I want money, I want buy some alcohol. One time, one homeless guy even asked marijuana, marijuana from me. Marijuana, ask from me. I said, I don't do marijuana myself. I ask them, why don't you, you have a shelter, why don't you go stay in shelter, why you come on the street? They said, oh, I just go shelter eat, I go shelter shower, I go shelter sleep. Daytime, I like stay on the street because in shelter, I can't do alcohol, I can't do my drug, too much, too, too much restriction, I can't do it, no freedom there. Imagine, seven thousand kids, kids walk on the street, homeless people come to them, beg for money, ask for marijuana. Imagine that. I don't, I, I'm sure a lot of homeless people from the, you know, Mercy House California project, they go there sleep, but they don't stay inside the home, the shelter daytime, they go on street, they have freedom on street. We, I love homeless, homeless people, don't get me wrong, I cook for them, I eat with them, I, I have no problem shaking hands with them. We have other way to help homeless people. We have other location to help this, help homeless people. Downtown LA, so many homeless people. I saw so many empty buildings, why don't we put them in those buildings away, far away from schools? Don't put on the busiest the street. Rosemead Boulevard is the busiest the street. Think about that, homeless people eat, sleep inside the shelter, get out, get alcohol, get drunk, three bottles to the driver who's driving on the Rosemead Boulevard. Who's fault?
Thank you. If you ever get tired of being a lawyer, you might try being a comedian.
I love help homeless people.
Thank you. I think there's a shortage of women comedians. You can, you can, you can, you can pass them and we can take a look at the pictures if you'd like. Peter?
Yes.
That's a hard act to follow, Peter.
Good evening, everyone. I thank everyone here, I really appreciate you, uh, you have me, especially for all the council members and staff. I, I know that you guys did your homework. Uh, so two points that I want to actually bring up. Uh, first of all, I agree with Greg. We feel that, uh, the project was not well informed. So the decision that I believe that the, the city development department is making, or they passed the first approval, because the supposedly, May twenty-second was the second approval that they are going in the, in the sequence, um, is, is part of the procedure. But it seems like that the procedure wasn't followed and the city was allowing that mistake to be kind of like overlooked. So I think that point I want to actually point up and, point out, uh, to all of you. The second point that I want to, uh, bring up is, if you pay attention to all, all of these fellow citizens around us, uh, one theme that I think I want to bring up is lack of information. Think about it. Mercy project, the Rosemeat project isn't their very first one. This is labeled for special needs. Why don't they have their procedures done? If they provide that in detail, it will answer a lot of questions. We don't have to have seventy-five people asking questions. They are not doing their job, the procedures are not adequate. So that makes me think that the management of the, of the company is, uh, I, I would say maybe lacking. So these are the two points that I want to bring up. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And again, appreciate for your time.
And, um, we're going to take about a ten-minute break. Okay, I'd like to call the next speakers. Jill Shook. Lang Sang Ding. Nancy Kong. One second there.
Good evening.
Hold on just a minute, please. Tang Goi Tieng. Fang, Fang Goi? And Richard Chen. Jill?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jill Shook, and I'm a professor at Azusa Pacific University. I teach housing justice, and I also am an advocate for affordable housing in the city of Pasadena. I'm very proud to be a citizen of Pasadena, where we have housed two hundred and twenty of the most chronic homeless. We have built some beautiful, permanent supportive housing. I hope you have a chance to go see it. It's called Marv's Place on the corner of Del Mar, or Mar Vista and Union. It looks like a Mediterranean villa. It's gorgeous. It's won an award as the best permanent supportive housing in all of Southern California. It's for nineteen formerly homeless families. I've had the privilege of visiting Mercy Housing's developments in places throughout the country. They are one of the most respected affordable housing developers in the U.S. It was started by Catholic nuns, and they, they have decided that everything they would do, would be with excellence. And so typically, when affordable housing development goes into a community, the statistics show that it improves property values. And all the research shows that in every case, it has improved property values and it, it's, it brings much value to that neighborhood. There's no correlation between property values and affordable housing. So I have the joy of teaching these concepts that have been proven, that are evidence-based, that oftentimes seem counterintuitive, but it's, it's wonderful opportunity that you have in this neighborhood to support this. What I've done is made a copy, you can see front and back, of all the different awards that Mercy Housing has received over the years. And I hope you have a chance to visit some of their beautiful work. One last comment? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Long Sing.
Lang Sing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe round position?
No, I just, we want to know who's here, thank you.
Okay. I live in Temple City since nineteen eighty-three, and my son was born here, my other son was grow up here, and they are all graduate from the UCLA and get some good stuff in here. So Temple City is a peaceful, quiet, and a very classic middle-class, middle-class village. But in this, even this years, the development was following by this kind of model and style ongoing. Today, I just bring here two issue, cause just like everybody already mentioned, we think location is wrong. Wrong location, that's number one thing. Number two thing, we do something, we don't want, we want to benefit everybody, include the homeless, include the veteran, you know, everybody. But also, the first priority is myself. This is my town, this is my home. And I want my home, my town, keep good value. Think about it, when the value down, our property, you know, the, the city budgets come from property tax. When those, when, when those people come down here and cost the image down, everything down, then where is the property tax come from? Then, there's no property tax, we have no budget. If we don't have budget, how do we develop our Temple City? We want to keep us a good, classic, okay? Just like my home was in here, and I think I'll stay here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just want to remind the speakers that we've had numerous speakers address the issue of location, of the safety of the children because of the amount of schools around the area, property values, and, and crime because of drugs and other paraphernalia there that a housing, a homeless housing site might present in the community. So if, we've already spoken to those issues numerous times, if you have something new, please share it, but please don't reiterate the same issues that we've already been addressed numerous times. So we have Nancy.
Nancy Kong.
Nancy.
Temple City.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, and I want to respond and to what the nice professor from Tem, from Pasadena has said about a property value. I have done some research on this, and research have shown that in a high crime rate area, when you put in a housing, housing development like this, the property value overall would be increased. But if you put a housing project like this in a low crime, low crime area such as Temple City, the property values would be likely to be decreased. So I have, I have done a lot of studies on it, and I also want to point out that most of the people that have been speaking in support of this housing project tonight, they're not Temple City residents, most of them. It is of course very easy for them to say, build it here, because they don't live in this area. It is kind of like the not in my backyard type of mentality. Temple City unfortunately have had a lot of unfortunate incidents lately, like fire, like the fire, Denny's stabbing, and there was a shootout at the sheriff's station, and it has put Temple City on the map in a negative light. Will this housing project make Temple City a better city or safer city to live in? I don't think so. Thank you for supporting, thank, thank you for opposing this housing project. I hope that our city attorneys will represent Temple City and its interest all the way and every step of the way, and go to all the county hearings, and if necessary, seek injunctive relief from the courts and oppose. What I'm also concerned with, oh, the zoning is wrong. They didn't do an environmental impact report, which would be required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard.
Richard.
Good evening. I come here as a concerned resident of Temple City, and also as an attorney of law, and I do invite you all to do your due diligence and look at the statistics and data that relates to this project. Specifically, I ask that you compare this Mercy Project to all the other Mercy Projects. I ask that you compare this Mercy Project and look at others to see the close proximity to the schools. I believe all the other Mercy Projects are not within defeat approximation, they are to the number of schools that we're talking about here. I also ask you, implore you, to look whether placing homeless individuals and veterans who are more prone to mental illness next to schools increases the likelihood of school shootings, which is a major concern for parents in the United States today. I also implore you to look at the fact that they are also looking to place dishonorably discharged veterans. And if you look up the definition of dishonorably discharged veterans, they include individuals that have been court-martialed and convicted of possibly murder, rape, or assault. Now you're placing these individuals now in a category with kids that are young, as five to six years old, who cannot defend themselves. I also implore you to look into whether Mercy Project has looked into alternatives other than this motel and this location. For example, West Covina is one individual I brought out. And finally, if after looking through all these data and statistics, you share the same concerns that I do, I implore you to stand with us when we fight this proposal. Thanks.
Thank you. Richard Chen? Did he already speak? Richard, that was you. Okay, thank you, Richard. Maria Lin. January Seng.
Who's this?
Ed Holder. Paul Tong. Peter Chen. Yes, thank you. Maria?
Yeah.
Okay. Maria Lin.
Okay, dear mayor and city council members, good evening. Thank you for listening to our comments tonight. I'm here to urge you to stop the Mercy Housing Project. As many have already pointed out, that there's great risk for the homeless population, so you already know the facts and figures, that a lot of them, they have very high percentage having substance abuse and mental health issues. So to say that, to place this housing project in Temple City is great risk and danger, is an understatement. And that's why we're all here, to try to convince you and ask for your support to stop this project. You know, the, during the last meeting, the supporters of the Mercy Housing Project asked us to visit El Monte, and have indicated that El Monte is a great model for them. So actually, I, I did some research and actually look into the El Monte facility. So first of all, the El Monte Mercy Housing Project only has forty units, and it's not in a residential area. The one that they're proposing in Temple City is in a residential area, and it's four times larger or more than the El Monte one. And then, looking at the crime rate for El Monte City, from twenty-eleven to twenty-fourteen, the crime rate in El Monte was very stable, below the national average, around seventy and eighties. And then in year twenty-fifteen, one year after the launch of the Mercy Housing Project, the crime rate went up forty-six percent to over one hundred. I can show you the graph here, and then you will see that there's a peak there. I know that this may not be a causal relationship, but it's a strong association. So please, I beg you, please help our community to stop this project. Thank you.
Thank you. January?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We all know the current motel is rundown, we want to change for better, but it's another thing to turn this into a permanent housing for the formerly homeless. It is absolutely not a better option, especially with so many units. These one hundred sixty-nine special units, formerly homeless will need a lot more support than this community can handle. Having just two live-in property manager is not sufficient. Where are the rehabilitative service that they desperately need to transition successfully? Mental health and counseling clinics, alcohol substance abuse rehab center, jaw placement centers, hospital not nearby or within two to three mile radius. Has anyone thoroughly examined this, thoroughly examined the long-term effects of this project if it's not successful? What if public funding gets cut in the next fiscal year, two thousand and eighteen, or in two year, we can only help service for half of the people? We will then only have eighty-four residents getting help, and what will we do with the other eighty-five residents that needs help? What is the contingency plan for when funding gets cut or depleted? I fear that this project is not successful, the nearby residents will pay the price. We all want to find a solution for the homeless problem in our society. In fact, we have an obligation to help those in need, especially our veterans who have bravely and selfishly served our country and made so many sacrifices for us. But we need to keep in mind that homelessness unfortunately is a national problem. We will not solve it today, and especially not with this project. It is not an appropriate location given its close proximity to nearby school. And lastly, how can we have confidence that Mercy Housing will run this largest special needs housing efficiently? Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Holder? Oh, just in, you're gonna have, okay. But he gave us somebody else's time. I mean, that was somebody else's time. Paul Tong, if you would come to the end, is that, Paul?
Evening, Madam Mayor, council members. So, let's see, so this is, this has been an emotional issue, as we all know. There've been a lot of emotions expressed. You guys have asked for facts tonight, so let's stick with the facts. So Mercy Housing came in, there's a, there's a meeting before, I, I wasn't there, but Mercy Housing came in and right off the bat, they lost our trust. So there's a question, as other people stated before, about the management capabilities, about following proper procedures, notification within a thousand radius, I don't have to recap any of that. But you can see there's a real trust issue now between us and Mercy Housing. Along with that comes accountability. So they've said that there's gonna be two, two managers and caseworkers on the site, and there are also gonna be some mentally ill patients, as well as dishonorably discharged veterans. How are you gonna ensure the safety of the community? Their caseworkers and managers are not policemen, are not law enforcement, how are you gonna ensure the safety? And to that fact, if something should happen, who's gonna be held accountable? Where's the accountability? Let's talk financial viability. So it's been stated by their employees that Mercy Housing also behaves like a corporation. So what happens if the funding runs out, like a regular corporation? Are you gonna shut down and leave the people that are there to fend for themselves? What's gonna happen? At least part of the funding for this is for Measure H. What happens if the funding from Measure H isn't enough? I don't know how much.
Paul, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Peter Chen?
Yes. I'm mayor and city members, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to voice my concern regarding this project, and I strongly oppose it. And I don't discriminate with homeless people, I really respect our veterans, but I don't think this welfare is really helping them. Welfare doesn't make American great again. Create job make American great again. So government should use our taxpayer money wisely to provide them job, to have them proudly use their hand to build their wealth, select their own house, select their own place to live, instead of force them to live in somewhere else. And also, I heard some concern, or some people support this project says, the current location of the hotel, they already have some drug users, they are using this hotel and create some dangers. Guess what? Imagine the, the location will be a hundred percent occupied by homeless, by drug users, what kind of dangerous provided for this community? And I guess police officers, you probably don't have any time to sleep, twenty-four hours you have to respond. And, and the other point, the third is, I heard also says, the resident for that project will be well-selected, will be well-managed, police will know every one of them. Guess what? What's other location, police know every one of them, get the well-managed state prison. Who want to, their kids live near state prison? So I strongly oppose this project. I think it's welfare, it doesn't help them all. Instead, they should provide, provide a job for them, and also if they are not able to work, if they mentally, they're not able to, they should stay in the hospital, sit in rehab center, instead of leave them free on the street, provide the dangers for them and for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue?
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm here to just make, clarify, I'm not opposing the housing project, but definitely I'm against this location. Two reasons. First, the harassment. So I work in the county hospital, general hospital downtown there, and we have, I make example, I have a little plaza there with homeless people. I used to go to the little plaza to get some, grab some lunch.
Speak into the microphone.
Grab some lunch. The thing is, you know, a lot of people coming to ask for money. Before, I gave one dollar and then ten people come up after. I don't have that much. You know, I'm not scared of them, but it's the harassment. I always have to, you know, hold my, like, other coworker to work there, to stop those. And until one time, I really, sometimes I buy them food. I give them a whole, like, sandwich with a drink meal to the guy, and the guy dump to the trash can and tell me, girl, I don't want this, give me money, I want drugs. Okay, first harassment, I don't, and my, and my kids are back into school, so I don't want them to be harassed by that. Second, you know, county hospital have one thousand beds, and our average ER waiting time is eight hours. Is our community ready for that? We only have San Gabriel Valley Hospital. So, and all these homeless people, they are drug, there's no doubt, it's a fact, most of them has problems, like, that, because as the biggest hospital- Like, because as the biggest hospital, you know, public hospital in the whole nation, you know, we deal with a lot of these clients every single day. They come to the hospital, they use the ER as the, getting the drugs as a pharmacy and they live against medical advice. And they just tell me, "Don't, give me the drug, give me the drug, I'll be fine, I'll be fine." I work in the STEMI program very close to the ER, you know, work together. So I don't think it's going to be work, our community doesn't have the resource to handle all this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Ping? Was that Betty, was that you that? Or is there a Betty, another Betty? That was Betty? That was not Betty. Betty Kwan? Leondra Graves? Patricia Martin? And Harold Martin?
This is... Betty. I'm Betty.
Go ahead, Betty.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members of the City of Temple City. I am currently a resident of Temple City. But I do have to say that I have lived in the City of Berkeley for four years and the City of Berkeley does provide services to the homeless and homeless veterans. And I have to say, the City of Berkeley is a very viable, safe city and has a world-renowned school district and university. I think, and then bringing that back to Temple City, I think we can do that here. So I am a proponent of the Mercy Housing Project because I think we can learn to provide services to the homeless and our homeless veterans. And, you know, I mean, by definition, we technically already live with the homeless at Golden Motel because the occupants at Golden Motel do not have the intent to stay there indefinitely, which by definition makes them homeless. And I, by personal knowledge, I know that Golden Motel has existed for at least 20 years as a motel. So by definition, for 20 years, it's already been operating, occupants have already by definition been homeless, living at that location. So I think that, you know, to allow a safe, viable, and also the housing prices in the City of Berkeley do not drop, they only go up, so it does not affect the housing prices at all. I think it maintains the housing prices and does have a chance to actually increase over time. So I am a proponent of the Mercy Housing Project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Betty. Leondra?
Hello, my name is Leondra, I am a current resident here. I grew up here, I went to school and moved back here. This is home to me. And ever since I was a little girl, I would walk down any LA street and want to cry seeing all those homeless people and I wanted to give them everything, I wanted to give them every penny in my pocket, but my dad said, "No, you got to keep some for yourself too." And every time I had a lunchbox full of food, I would always try to give some to the homeless and the needy. I definitely stand by the fact that I am extremely liberal, I am, like my stepdad says, a cliche, extreme liberal millennial. And I'm proud of it. But the reality of the situation is not possible, honestly. Like, the fact that it is a 171 unit where we're planning on filling 169 of those units with at least one resident, most likely two or three, and there's only going to be two managing people that are permanently staying on that facility, not to mention, even though this is going to be a rehabilitating center, these resources are not going to be effective for all of these residents. Each of these individuals, whether it be a drug disability, an alcoholic disability, or even psychological, they need extreme individualized care. So having this mass of people coming in with only a few people to spare each day and maybe an appointment three weeks down the line when they're already going through intense drug, what's the word? What? Crises, I guess? Withdrawals. Drug withdrawals or any type of psychological dependency withdrawals and they don't have that immediate resource for each individual person, we're not helping anyone in this situation except for the people who are getting money in their pockets. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Martin?
Hi, I'm going to talk pretty fast because I have a lot to say. So I've lived here for over 25 years, I raised three kids here, I was, they attended school here, I was on school committees, I work at PCC, our Temple City students transfer there, I invested in our children. I heard tonight so many people say they like homeless people, feed them, give them money, but not housing. They want to help the homeless but not want them to live in their neighborhood. Jobs without a place to live doesn't help anybody. I'm an immigrant, my parents immigrated here when I was five and I am so grateful that this country took my family in, like so many people that are here tonight. I believe it is our moral and civic duty to welcome and help those that are also trying to make a better life for themselves, to give them affordable housing like this country accepted us immigrants. I agree there is a lot of misinformation about veterans and the homeless. These people will be screened, a lot of this misinformation needs to be remedied. I heard a lot of people talk about fear for the safety of their children, but at the last meeting, I heard about all the crime at the Golden Hotel and I wonder if all these parents came to city council meetings to complain about the ex-convicts, the rapists, the child molesters at the motel. Do they also ask the city for background checks for all the apartments in Temple City and people who live there? Where are there, where there is no checks and balances or services? The Statue of Liberty says, "Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shores. Send these, the homeless tempest toss to me, I lift my lamp beside the golden door." Now that we are Americans, it is our turn to welcome the homeless. Please hear the facts and not the emotional response of the misinformed that are here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Harold Martin? Michelle Chow? Lawrence Chow? Ronnie Lane? Q Sun? Chi Sun? Chris Stratton? Is Michelle Chow here? Lawrence Chow? Ronnie Lane? Ronnie?
Hello, everyone up there, thank you so much for listening to us tonight, I really appreciate you. My name is Ronnie Lane, once again, I oppose the Mercy Project. I have three children and invested in this community for 16 years. I have family who served and are still serving in the military. For 10 years, I donated my time leading Boy Scouts, working with over 100 young boys. I teach them about community and to respect our veterans. I can assure you, everyone here has compassion for our veterans. I have compassion for my children, the youth, and veterans. If we don't protect them, who will? However, we have a big problem with the 109 homeless and six dishonorably discharged veterans relocating right next to our schools, within close walking distance. Even worse, these individuals will not be subject to drug screening. Even veterans in Temple City, I know, say this is unacceptable. Matter of fact, even one of the veterans living in the El Monte Mercy Project told me the six dishonorably discharged veterans should not be allowed. This will make our community less safe for our youth and should not be allowed near our schools. Relocate the project away from our children, maybe a mile or so away in either direction, like El Monte, just not right in the middle of all of our schools, it's not safe. Tragically, two years ago this month, Jade Jardiana Larson, a six-year-old little girl in a Sacramento Mercy Development, was beaten and burnt to death while under their care. This is not a safe environment. I ask you to help our community, its children, and demand they relocate this project away from our schools. R, demand they only house homeless senior citizens and veterans there. Please represent us, lead our voice, and aid us with all means possible, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Young Chen?
Chi Sun? Hi, good evening. I lived in Temple City for 30 years and tonight, when I come here, I saw a lot of signs asking the city to stop the Mercy Housing. We don't oppose the Mercy Housing, but we oppose the location because of the, there's a lot of traffic there and a lot of people live along here and many people express, there are a lot of schools around here and there are a lot of people, a lot of children, even the Mercy Housing, to stay in location is not good for the city, not good for the children, not good for the school. So I oppose the housing to stay in location. I think, I feel the same as the people live here, stay here outside, a lot of side outside, the people, they ask the city to stop this project in their location. And I do believe the same as you, if you live in Temple City, it was, it was the same as me, ask the city to stop this project in this location. This is what I think it, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Chi Sun?
Yes. Thank you, City Council. I'm not in favor of this project. A lot of our fellow citizens has talked about location safety, I'm not going to repeat that. I just heard about the City of Berkeley, it's safe. I couldn't help laughing. Go to city-data yourself, figure out the crime rate. And I want to share about Mercy Housing, some data, some facts. So look at their tax return 2015, the total revenue is 19 million. Out of 19 million, 12 million and 200,000 were paid at salary. This is the highest at those kind of charity organization doing housing projects. 35% of the salary go to 24 senior management. So, do you trust them? I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group is Chris Stratton, Rachel Ingalls? Win Lee? Past? Stratton? Don't have a last name, but Mandy? Lisa Cooper? Lucy Liu? And Rick Brockman? Rachel? Nope. Win Lee? Welcome.
Hi, I'm a Temple City resident and I want to thank you all for allowing every person to talk and for listening to every person and sitting there for a long period of time. Really appreciate it. I grew up in Temple City and these past couple of weeks when I've learned about this project, I've actually been feeling pretty sad, hearing my neighbors have such fear of the unknown and to say in the same breath that they are compassionate for poor people, but they don't want them to live near them. I feel like a lot of the fear is not based in reality. I find myself, I am still unsure about this project, but I want to learn about what the real situation is. So I have a couple of questions for the council. The first one is, in the documentation that you're asking from Mercy Housing, are you going to, is there going to be any documentation about the crime impacts of existing affordable housing units, such as the one in El Monte and other ones that are similar to this one? And my other question is, I know that it was brought up that the El Monte location is not exactly like the one in Temple City, but it is run by Mercy Housing, it does have homeless veterans in it, and I think it would be great, I wonder if you would consider attending one of their upcoming tours of their location? They have one on Thursday night and they have one on June 10th in the morning. I plan to go because I want to see these people for myself, I want to see what these things look like for myself. I don't want to let fear control what I'm thinking. And so I hope that you will join me in coming to see the site for yourself. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Lucy?
Good evening, excuse me. Although the proposed project sits on land within the unincorporated area of San Gabriel, the sidewalks right outside the doors are within Temple City jurisdiction. The proposed project will be housing a minimum of 169 residents who have been, who have to be chronically homeless to qualify for placement. Even if the applicants pass the screening process, the underlying health issues cannot be eradicated. According to the developer's own published information, there is no medical supervision on-site to administer aid to residents who need them. This means these residents will be using resources that impact the same ones Temple City residents contract with, namely Alley County Fire and Alley County Sheriff's Department. Furthermore, Temple City's open space is already under ratio. Some, if not all, of the residents who will be living on this proposed project will most likely utilize the open space within Temple City, which unfairly burdens the residents of Temple City. The human factor is a big question that should be addressed when looking at environmental impact, not just the structure itself, as it is not a bubble, and issues that pertain only to the maintenance of the structure can not be the only subjects that they focus on. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick? Brockman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I've lived in the San Gabriel Valley for 30 years, my wife and her family, for over 50. As a disabled veteran, I'm very concerned about the plight of the homeless veterans. As a veteran who travels to the West LA VA two or three times a month, I can tell you that homeless veterans would be better served by being housed closer to VA facilities that provide for their needs. Having to transport veterans to either West LA, Long Beach, or Supulvita VA from Temple City could and would further tax the already overburdened VA system. You should know that the West LA VA is 29 miles away. Long Beach, 30 miles. Supulvita, 35 miles. Veterans who are more than 30 minutes late to their appointments are often not seen and forced to reschedule. How does this serve our veterans who are in great need of medical assistance? I've been in youth ministry for 11 years. I've been involved in a variety of projects that have benefited the homeless. For 11 years, parents have trusted me with the safety of their children. As a former Marine, I do a decent job of securing the youth entrusted to me. It takes a village to see to the safety of the youth of our community. And Madam Mayor and members of City Council, the village has spoken. Furthermore, I pose this question, does this mean that every school will be provided with a school resource officer to provide for their safety? Otherwise, you're putting our children at risk. Our local law enforcement is entirely too overwhelmed with our safety and our protection. How much more of a burden are you willing to mount upon our local law enforcement and our officers here? I do not want to deny my fellow veterans any opportunities, but I urge you not to place the safety of our schools, communities, and families at risk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa Cooper? Stacy Bradshaw? Ching Zhao? Yang Li? And just a first name, Beverly? And Emily on Limmin Avenue? Stacy?
Good evening, I'm a City of Monrovia resident, but I'm a community college instructor at four community colleges in this area, Glendale, Pasadena, Mount Sac, and Chaffee College. I've seen increased numbers of veteran students who are returning from studying abroad or serving our country abroad, coming to college and experiencing increasingly over the last five years, increased needs for services, PSTD services, counseling, all kinds of manners of support for re-entering society, including needing affordable housing. So first I want to just thank you for this hearing and I want to applaud all of the residents of Temple City who are here with great compassion and passion for this project and I want to support. The process should be an open one and it should involve citizens' feedback. feedback, so I'm a champion of that. I've also participated into Habitat for Humanity Build in the City of Lawndale, which are really about the principle of a hand up, not a hand out. It's sometimes the only way that people get a chance. So at its basic premise, I want to make sure that we preserve this notion of rooting for people's success, and not vilifying and separating out the passions around the real estate side of the transaction and its location, from categorizing in a negative way the people who might be benefited from that affordable housing. Right? Our languaging of this process, both for those for and against it, is a really sacred part of that process. So I just wanted to frame that people should hopefully try to separate their strong views against the particular location, and rather channel their energy to creating win-win solutions, even if the project doesn't end up in Temple City.
Thank you. Ching Zhao?
Hi, my name is Ching Zhao. I'm a resident of Temple City. I've lived here for ten years. I work in Hollywood, across the Chinese theater in the Trailer Park Building. Every day, I run into basically homeless people. And last year, and every often, the street is closed. Last year, there was a female tourist who stepped to death by one of the homeless people. And shortly after that, there was incident that one of the homeless people are charging at the police officer, and wouldn't listen to the warning from the police officer. And the officer had no choice, but shoot at him, and eventually killed him. And I heard that the reason the homeless people doing that is, they're not bad people, they just didn't take their medication. So, last year, March eighteenth, my home, I live on Emperor, was broken. We called nine-one-one. And the officer was very nice, say, stay away, because you're not sure if you're still there, the people in your home. So they said that we are handling many cases, you have to be patient, stay away. We waited for forty minutes, until the police, three police, police come by and searched my property. Eventually, we got home. The home was broken, the back door was broke, the glasses were smashed. So, my question is, if, you know, a homeless people harass kids, or doing something, you know, to the school kids, what is acceptable response time from the police? To meet that response time, how much additional budget the City of Temple City will have to provide? Thank you very much. I oppose this project.
Thank you. Beverly? Emily? Thank you, Emily. And Emily, you're a Temple City resident.
Yes, I'm a Temple City resident, and my family has lived in Temple City for, I guess, almost fifty years now. And I'm speaking today as a Temple City resident and somebody who has worked in homeless services for years now. And I've seen the benefits of permanent supportive housing, and the effects that it can have on the people who are living there. Permanent supportive housing is the only really proven way to help people get out of homelessness permanently. You can't get a job if you don't have an address, you can't detox if you don't have a place to go. It's leaving people on the streets until we have decided that they're worthy of our help is just shocking to me. And I just, I don't understand what has given us the right to decide who we can and who we can't help, and who does and doesn't deserve medical care or housing. Housing is a right. It's not, it's not a privilege. We all have housing, but tomorrow, I could become homeless, and I don't want to see the town that I've grown up in, the town that my family grew up in, turn their back on me because my situation has changed. I just, it's, it's not fair. And that's, I support this project, I support permanent supportive housing, I support the homeless population, I support mentally ill, because they're just people like the rest of us, and they need support, just like the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Carol Dolly. Kevin Lee. Carol Lee.
Hi, my name is Carol Daly. I'm with Foothills Kitchen, with St. Vincent de Paul, and with the Temple City Coalition. I hear a lot of fear of safety, fear for property value, fear of the homeless. We're talking about people without homes, as though they're less than us, as though they're criminals, and as they're bad people. As a person that works with these people without homes, I can say that the people that we're talking about are people like you and me, that they've lost their homes, they've lost their jobs. At our kitchen, we serve a banker, a mechanical engineer, a woman with a high position that was laid off from a hospital, and many people with trade skills. Have you seen the price of rents? Every day, there are more people added to the homeless, because, to the number of homeless because of the cost of rents. There are thousands and thousands of people waiting for homes. You know how to get rid of the homeless? You give them a home. Previously, Golden Motel was crime-ridden. You have an organization that will spend seventeen million dollars to redevelop and provide one hundred and sixty-nine permanent supportive homes for veterans and formerly homeless individuals. Provide case management for job opportunities, placement, and training and services. If the rules are not followed, the people will be not allowed in that housing. There are so many people waiting to have what you and I have, a place to call home. Let's not forget that when you give people a home, they are no longer homeless. You begin to restore a person's dignity of not having to live on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Lee is not here. Carol Lee?
Right here.
Carol?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. We like to, we are grateful that you are our public servants of Temple City. We look to you to represent the interests of your Temple City constituents, and to the LA County in our, for our best interests. We understand that the property is not under Temple City's jurisdiction, but we have children in the Temple City schools, so that does fall under our responsibility to care for their welfare. We like to remember that Mercy Housing is partnering with the LA County DHS, the Department of Health Services, and one of their services besides providing health care and affordable housing, and help for those who need to be, to have reentry into the program for community living, is to serve the population that are, that have been formally released from prison, who may be on parole, who do need oversight. And we want to remember that there are laws that are already established within the five-hundred feet limit, the thousand feet, the two-thousand feet, and also within the half-mile, that these, these people who are released from prison, that they cannot come in contact with, where there are schools, where there are daycare centers, facilities that care for children, as well as where children congregate. And so we are asking that the City Council be reminded, and just to remember these laws to help us in our situation. And we look forward to seeing you on May thirty-first at the downtown public hearing. Thank you.
It's not May thirty-first. It was postponed, until May twenty-first?
June twenty-first.
Or June twenty-first, I'm sorry.
June twenty-first. So we'll look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you.
And we look for you to being our champion. Thank you.
Thank you. Xin Kuiying. Wendy Deng. Brenda Chan. Wayne Chu. Peter Lo. And Lisa Nemiro. Nemiro. Thank you. This is Wendy.
Good evening, Mayors and Councilmen, and respectful lawyers, everyone here. I'm a Temple City resident for fifteen years. I've been working at the mental health field for more than ten years. So recently, I have neighbor told me that in the Temple City library outside, homeless with a truck is yelling at the kids, and scared the kids, they all running away. You know, so what I want to say is the mental health issues, because the homeless, when they have mental health, and mental health issues, if they don't get treatments, most likely, they don't know what they are doing. So it's kind of threatening the community, especially the kids. You know why, in the hospital, there are two different kind of hospital? Why they separate a hospital as mental health hospital and regular hospital? And why mental health hospital has lock facility? Why the regular hospital, they don't have locks? Why outpatient mental health clinic, we all have panic button under our table? Because we can encounter dangerous situation, unpredictable dangerous situation. At one time, I was, when I worked in the mental health hospital and outpatient both, one time, a patient throwed a whole table onto us. And one time, I was slapped by a patient, unpredictable, when I just walk him out, all of a sudden, you know. So what I concern is, you know, we provide a treatment for, the government provide a lot of treatment for those peoples. However, uncompliant is the big issue. If they don't comply with the mental health treatment, nothing we can do. Even they're in the hospital, we cannot force them to take the medications. Even outside, you know, we have patient, we give them two years prescription, they pick up prescription, but they never take it. This, this is the problem issues, because we are not able to control them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember. My name is Brenda Chan, and I'm here, I want to just make two points. I'm a nurse, I'm a teacher, and I teach in community college. And I share a lot of the concerns, you know, the residents have shared. But I equally have, you know, a lot of experience working with homeless and veterans. I was in Sepulveda VA, and also the downtown union rescue mission there. So first point I want to make is, if the county is going to pour resources to help this project, well, of course, they're not putting the seventeen million, but the other resources, you know, then why not we ask all of you to help us, the City Council, to make the streets safer in the county area? Do you know how dangerous every morning, or the pickup area for kids on Emperor Street to fight space with cars? There are no sidewalks. I'm on the county side, so, you know, outside my house, there's no sidewalks. So when I do my walks, I don't feel really safe. So let's make our community safer, let's not dump the homeless population into this area. We not opposing projects for them, housing for them. Yes, they need a place so that they can move on, they can get jobs. But they also need, you know, a lot of mental health, medication support. We don't want Rosemeat Boulevard to turn into a skid row like downtown. Then the second point is, I want to help specify finish the third criteria, I think all of us need to hear that. So the third criteria says, an adult head of household, or minor head of household, if no adult is present in the household. So that's a big problem already. With a diagnosable substance use disorder, serious mental illness, developmental disability, and co-chronic, co-occurrence.
Brenda, thank you. Wayne?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of City Council. I just, my name is Wayne Chu, and I'm a resident of LA County, right on San Gabriel side. So I'm pretty close to this development. I'm concerned about this development primarily for the lack of kind of due diligence done by everyone, I mean everyone, right? First of all, the developer didn't do their due diligence based on the conditional use permit. I was just recount three sentences from the conditional use permit that I found on the website. So the requirement on A is that the required use at this location shall not, one, adversely affect the health, peace, comfort, or welfare of persons residing or working in the surrounding area, or two, be materially detrimental to the use, enjoyment, or valuation of property of other, of other persons located in the facility of the site, and three, the most important one, jeopardize, endanger, or otherwise constitute a menace to the public health, safety, or general welfare. It's not provided, the developer hasn't provided that, the Public Works Regional Planning has not presented that, and I implore you as a City Council to look into it, ask for the proof that it is safe, it is, it is a doable project, and I implore you to also communicate with, not just within the Temple City, but also San Gabriel, Arcadia, all the local, all the local cities that are affected by this project. That's all I'm asking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter?
Good evening. Thank you for your opportunity to speak. I live in Temple City thirty-five years, and I'm going to bury in the Temple City. However, I think everybody talking about the housing and the homeless, I would like to talking about the employment. I thought Mercy do a good job, try to locate those unfortunate, but they put the wrong location. I think they forgot the impact of the employment for the homeless. Because in the LA County, for instance, city industry, they have many land opening to developing, I think they're supposed to move it to there, because the city industry have a more company, because right now, the government have a very tight immigration policy. So many companies, they're looking for the employment. You walk to the market, they have a flyer, they're looking for different position. I think Mercy is supposed to relocate those people to that area, help them, where people get closer to the job, they think into working, and they can become a self-sufficient, self-support, and become a citizen like everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Somebody forgot their cellphone right here. Thank you so very much for this opportunity. I would like to express my concern. I live a block away on Muscatel and Gori Balde from the proposed project, we're strongly opposed as a family and the neighborhood. I want to say that as a community, we're asked right now a question, how can you be so heartless? How can you be so harsh? Why the question is either help one hundred and seventy adults, or jeopardize up to ten thousand youth and kids? How is this apples-to-apples? How is this fair to push, to push the question like this? Are you good human enough to reject this one seventy mature adults that, yes, are disadvantaged? Or jeopardize up to ten thousand children and youth of the community? I don't feel it's fair. I also don't feel like it's fair to say apples-to-apples. They are routing right now and inviting us to go and visit their El Monte All Veterans Community. This is not apples-to-apples. This is not a mixed housing like this one. There are only forty units in this hundred percent veteran community that's located across the street from the police station. This one, please let me underline this point, it will be the largest in California mixed housing community, the largest amongst the most schools ever located in the residential facility. Why? Why the, we are most similar to the Arlington community, Arlington apartment service that's located in, in San Francisco. Why we're not invited to go there? There is amounts of evidence how ran down this community is, how in absolute disarray. There are tents, tents that are built around this in the house, and they're not inviting us to go there, although our project will be most similar to that community, not that El Monte.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tony Wang? Tony Wong? Tony, you have two.
Oh, sorry, he can't speak English. He has to speak in Chinese somebody else. He's actually had beautiful.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Where is our interpreter? Would you, our translator left, would you mind? Thank you. Does he have a written statement? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Alan Zhao?
I think my name is Tony Wang.
Oh, you're Tony? You're Tony Wang? Okay. Well, there's Tony Wong and there's Tony Wang, and they both look the same, but welcome. You're fine, go ahead. Tony?
Yeah.
Address the council.
I need a interrupter.
I'm sorry?
Translator.
Oh, you need a translator. Lucy, would you?
Uh, I live in Temple City.
I'm a builder and a, an investor.
呃，目前我在Temple City有一些项目.
I currently have some projects in Temple City.
但是因，因为这个Mercy House的事情，我有些项目暂时停下了.
He has currently put these projects on hold because of the Mercy Housing. He spoke to, I spoke to other developers and investors and builders and investors, and they're also the same as what, doing what I am doing, or observing. The consensus is, if this Mercy Housing project is approved, we will withdraw all of our investments. There are some developers who have heard about this project, and they have stopped, they have stopped proceeding with their investments in Temple City. As a group of developers, we've contributed a lot to the, a lot of income to the Temple City Unified School District. If we do not have additional new developers coming in, then the city income will drop substantially. And that will cause difficulty in finding qualified teachers. Currently, we have, our, our school rating points are either nine points or ten points. It may even drop to five or six.
师傅的收入也会减少.
City income will also decrease. The streets of Temple City, the environment, and the safety will all deteriorate.
实际上，这Mercy House影响到我们每一个居民.
Mercy Housing in actuality affects every one of the residents. The current housing prices may go, may drop from eight hundred thousand to six hundred thousand, may even drop to four hundred thousand.
这对每一个家庭来说都是一个巨大的损失.
It's a great, it is a great loss for every family.
呃，以后如果大家再提及Temple City的话，就不会想到是一个美丽，是一个安全的小城市.
In the future, when people mention Temple City, they will not think of it as a safe and beautiful small city.
Temple City实话是Camila，我的女儿名字也是Camila，因为她出生在Temple City.
The city flower for Temple City is the Camelia, and that is the name of my daughter because she was born here.
大家以后想到的就会是Temple City是homeless的家.
In the future, people will think that Temple City will be the home of the homeless. The builders and investors will also leave from here, depart from here.
总体上来说，Temple City可能成为另一个犯罪率极高的Almonte.
Temple City may become another Almonte with high crimes. Therefore, for this, for the, for our children and for the, the family, the homes that we have worked so hard to create, I adamantly oppose Mercy Housing building in Temple City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, and for the benefit of the public, you'll notice that the speaker was given four minutes. Under California law, when there's translation, because everything has to be said twice, the speaker gets twice as much time. So we were only being fair by giving four minutes instead of two. Thank you for your patience, and we appreciate you.
Alan Zhao? Mr. Murphy, I was gonna say that. I'm gonna make, you're gonna earn your dues.
Hi, dear Mayor and City Council. I'm a Temple City resident living very close by the Golden Motel location. I walk past the motel just about two times a day for the last six years. And as of now, and also the last six years, the outside of motel is safe. I, I do not feel a threat when I walk by it. And I see a lot of students walking by every morning, and a lot of elderly people, and also some ladies walking by during their morning exercise. I think the statement made by Mercy Housing about the, the problems with the hotel may be a little bit exaggerated. Because I personally feel that it was safe at that location, outside motel. Inside motel, I don't know. I'm very much distracted by this project at this point because my kids, kids feed me questions, asking me things like, how would he, would he be able to go to school if this project take place? And also, what would the mentally ill people do to him if he meet one of them on the road? I am concerned, and I don't know what to do. So over the weekend, I, we, we watched the Home Alone movie with them, trying to explain to them that homeless people are just normal people. There's really nothing to be afraid of, and I don't know what else I can help them.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I ask you to help us, the residents around the neighborhood, to stop this project.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Lacerole? Is there anyone who filled out a card that I didn't call your name? Would you just line up behind? Thank you.
Hi, good evening to all of you. Well, I do oppose this project with all due respect to all the people that are for it and that say that we're heartless. We are not heartless, and in fact, the veterans, I know that we owe them a lot. We do. So it is hard for me. But the fact is, the crime has increased in that area of Rosemead Boulevard and Longdon, where this Mercy project is proposed to reside. Our kids are already in danger. Very recently, I read a police blotter where a guy posed as a police officer right there on the Longdon Boulevard and Rosemead Boulevard area, Longdon Apartments. He tried to kidnap a Longdon apartment tenant. The tenant was actually handcuffed by the guy, but thankfully was able to run away from this would-be kidnapper. Again, this is on the police blotter. You know, basically, our kids are already in danger. Now we're finding out there's the FLAKA drug, F-L-A-K-K-A drug. There's so many dangers, why add, and notice that I'm gonna say one hundred non-veteran, out of respect for, deep respect for our veterans who have paid a high price, hard-working people that are not, you know, trying to get anything, you know, easy, you know, but why add one hundred non-veteran men in that area that already has crime? Our children need better, deserve better than this. Now let's talk about the possible successes of this homeless project. We all know that for a project to be successful, people have to want to be helped. But know this, that even those that want to be helped tend to regress. And they go back to drugs. They don't want to, but they can't help it, they regress. Look, I plead, look at places like Hope Gardens. The Homeless Rescue, Union Rescue Mission has had excellent success with that. Put it in industrial areas, please.
Sir, can I have your name, please?
Yes, I'm Stephen Michaels. I'm from the, and I live in Temple City. And I'm from the Coalition for the Homeless. I'm very sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, yeah. First of all, I've been asked to invite the council to United Methodist Church on May twenty-third at seven PM to discuss this project further with the Temple City Coalition for the Homeless. So I just wanted to put that out there. And the United Methodist Church is just right behind the library, as you all know. Let's see. I was going to give you everyone detail. I just want to address the issue of the concerns about crime. There have been no background checks at Golden Motel. There have been four hundred and seventy incidents in the last five years of different crimes like possession of narcotics, assault and battery, et cetera. I've also verified that there are sex offenders who currently reside at the Golden Motel through the California State Megan's Law search website. Mercy Housing conducts criminal background checks on all of its residents and will not admit applicants who have committed felonies within the last seven years. I also understand that each tenant will have a lease that will identify behaviors for which a person would be evicted if they violate them. Mercy Housing has assured me that they will work to maintain housing stability for its residents. Those who violate their lease will be moved in suitable housing solutions outside of the area. They would not simply be, be kicked back out onto the streets. I understand this is an LA County matter, but I urge you to support this project. I think it would beautify the neighborhood, and it would be a vast improvement over the current blight of the Golden Motel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you Yang? Yang Li? Go ahead, please. What is your name?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I am Belinda Shu.
Belinda Shu?
Yes. I read the application of the Mercy Housing project. I, I see the environmental checking checklist form indicate that the project has no impact or less than significant impact to the environment. But if this, if they are telling the truth, why all these people come here to tell you guys what we concern? We, as the residents or workers around this area, think it do has a significant impact to our community. So, and they didn't provide any detailed facts and data to prove this. So we request them to pro- provide us the facts and data. And in the project narrative, Mercy Housing state that Mercy Housing California convert a similar motel in Northern California into supportive housing, and it continue to be a huge success that has improved the labor. I want to show, I want to show you the truth. This is their huge success. Do you want Mercy Housing to turn our beautiful Temple City to this? I don't want. I doubt if Mercy Housing have the capability to manage this big housing project that have one hundred sixty-nine units. I do don't want Temple City to become this successful.
Thank you. Sir, could you state your name, please?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Yang Wu. My English name is Zhou Wu. I came from this country twenty-eight years old. I beat the bus from twenty-nine years old. I, after I, I'm not finishing my post-bachelor degree in Michigan. I do, do not good, but I'm very succeed in small business. Unfortunately, I location, run location my warehouse. I help three homeless. It's not a help there. I don't have a choice, but it's happening in my fifty-ninth birthday. The police illegal trespassing. Have somebody there? Have activity or crime? Have a what? I don't know. I don't know there, but I help there. I have to pay the true value after, after police show up. You cannot believe their behavior. The homeless people watch already. I help, I still help. I give the ten command to my, I'm the guardian of twenty-eight boy. He afraid of police. I say, I still here, I'm your guardian. I will protect you, I will train you. Your life not a beginning yet. Your life is in full kind of drug. So I spend four hundred fifty, the drug is still fair. No mercy. Mercy House, you give the crime, you cannot handle. You don't believe it? You go to my warehouse to look at. To look at, give the police to ruin me, try to size my wealth for free.
Thank you, sir.
I suffer of the pain for mercy.
Thank you. And just one last comment. I have a Beverly Guan. She's Temple City resident. She waited for a long time, she had to leave. And I will stop reading her statement after two minutes. And she said, "To put all these safety concerns to arrest, all citizens need some accountability." Mercy Housing has mentioned all measures they will take to provide safety and is so confident that safety will not be an impact. Then they shared, they have no problems adding a statement to the conditional permit. Mercy Housing will be responsible for all crimes resulting from this development, and LA County will back this statement up. Second point, sure, there are needs to house the homeless and veterans, and the existing motel is not much better. However, in lieu of mercy, the county can consider senior housing instead. I did some quick research on the average wait for senior housing, low income in San Gabriel Valley, and it is fifteen years. Fifteen years, and it will be longer as baby- 15 years and it will be longer as baby boomers become seniors. This is inconsistent with the city's plan. And again, that was from Beverly Guan who had to leave. Okay, I am going to close public comment and we now move to item six. Is there something? Greg? Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Per your instructions, we've taken a lot of notes on what we've heard tonight. We will take all the facts that we've heard tonight, add that to the information that our office receives from the county per our Public Records Act request, add that to the research we do on our own, and we will be filing a comment letter about this project. Our office will then go to the County Planning Commission meeting. Again, that's June 21st. We invite the public and we request that the public go to represent themselves. Again, our office represents the official city. The individuals should all take the opportunity to represent their own interests the way that they have tonight. The County Planning Commission can either approve or deny the project at that time. Either way, somebody who's interested can appeal that decision of the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors. If an appeal is filed, the Board of Supervisors will schedule a hearing. We would submit a second comment letter to the board and again, appear at that hearing. And if it comes to that, again, we would encourage the public to attend as well. The Board of Supervisors would reach a final decision to approve or deny the project. Only at that time could any interested party file a lawsuit. I know that people have talked at different times about, you know, would a lawsuit be filed to stop the project? Only after a Planning Commission decision, only after an appeal, and only after a Board of Supervisors decision would that even be a possibility. But it's very important to our office to have the information we've received tonight so that our comments and our appearance at the first hearing and if necessary, the second hearing are good ones. So I want to thank the public. I want to thank the two senior deputies from District Five who came out to speak to us tonight. I do want to thank Mercy Housing for being here to listen to the public as we have done. And as the two senior deputies said, and just to reiterate to the public, each of us is a resident of District Five and the voices matter to District Five. So again, please, please move on and continue to offer your comments to the county. As a final point, we did receive this petition tonight and I've spoken with a couple members of the public about it. It appears as though this may be best turned in to Michelle Bush at the county. I will hold on to it tonight, but if the people who turned it into our office would like to pick it up and get it to Michelle Bush, that would be wonderful. I'm unable to forward it for the public. They would need to do that on their own, but I'm happy to hand it back at that time. And if you all have any questions or further directions for me, I'll be happy to take that. Thank you, ma'am.
So Greg, just to reiterate, June 21st is the hearing in front of the county. At that time, any resident can appeal that decision?
If the Planning Commission reaches a decision that night-
If it's that night.
-then the county would have appeal procedures the same way that your city has appeal procedures for any decision reached by your Planning Commission. They would announce them or at the very least, staff would be able to talk to the public about appealing if somebody wanted to do that.
Do you know if there's a fee?
I do not know what the county's fee is on that. I've never looked at that. But we can look that up for you and have that information available.
Okay. So any questions from council? No. Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to other business.
We'll take a five-minute break.
You want a break? Sure.
Five minutes.
So if anyone, the Mercy Housing topic is over for this evening, if you'd like to leave, you're welcome to stay longer and enjoy the rest of the council meeting also. We move to item six, public comments on the items not listed on the agenda. Is anyone, would anyone like to come up and comment? We move to item seven, the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion unless removed for further discussion. Is there anyone who would like to?
Motion to approve consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann? I'm sorry, excuse me. Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protan?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Item eight, public hearing, there is none. Unfinished business, there is none. New business is item 10B, funding agreement with Los Angeles County Community Development Commission for the Temple City Library renovation and expansion project. And we have a presentation from our city manager and assistant to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the council concerning the hour. First, I would like to introduce some of the team that has been involved in this. On the staff side, Brian Haworth, our assistant to the city manager, from our city attorney's office, Greg Murphy, and sitting in the front row right here, coming at a late hour, Scott Stevenson, executive director of the Community Development Commission, Pat McGee from the county library, Fred Hungerford from the county library, Ken Lee from the Community Development Commission.
I'm Billy from the Community Development Commission. All here tonight. We've all worked together over the last several months to put together the item that's before you. So this is truly a collective effort between our respective staffs on both agencies' side. The item before you involves a proposed funding agreement with the county of Los Angeles for the Temple City Library renovation and expansion project. As you may recall, council last year designated 1.95 million of unassigned fund balance, meaning money that you haven't designated for any other purpose or one-half of the total project's cost to expand, renovate the Temple City Library, conditioned upon the county committing the same amount of funding. Matching funds were appropriated by the county last year. Since that time, the city staff and the county staff have prepared the funding agreement that outlines the funding commitment, obligations by both parties, as a prior provided in attachment A. Some of those key funding provisions are a payment schedule, how the accounting for the project will happen, future concurrence on prioritized library enhancements, and the project oversight and construction oversight by the county's Community Development Commission. Should the council approve the agreement tonight, the city and county will work together to develop a more refined project schedule and will come back to you periodically with updates on that. So in closing, the, we ask that you, the recommendation is to approve the funding agreement and for the project and then officially appropriate the 1.95 billion dollars and it will be based on two schedules that are in the staff report and how we'll disperse those over the next couple of years. We are here for any questions that you may have. County is here for any questions you may have as well and I, again, thank them for sticking this one out tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Do we have any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Yu?
Just very excited about the project and thanks so much for my, actually, some of those are my colleagues in the county and thank you so much for putting this together.
Mayor Protan?
I can't wait.
Councilmember, I forgot your name for a minute. Fish!
Just want to thank you again and looking forward to our partnership. This is a long time coming. We've been wanting this, I know. Mayor Sternquist worked very hard and so I'm very excited.
Councilmember Chavez?
Nothing, thank you.
I just want to say that thank you for sticking around and let's get the party going for the library. So I'd like to open public comment. I'm going to close public comment. Any council comments? Nope. Council motion. Can we have a motion?
I would like to motion the attached funding agreement for the Temple City Library renovation and expansion project. Appropriate 1.95 million from the general fund reserves for project-related pre-construction and construction costs. Authorize the city manager to sign said agreement and within 30 days of this extension, disperse $450,000 to the Los Angeles County Community Development Commission and authorize the city manager to disperse the remaining 1.5 million in funds to the commission once the project-related construction documents are released for bids.
Second.
Okay. The motion has been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protan?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. We now have the money where it needs to be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, would you like to say anything?
If I could say something beginning to, Scott is actually a former Temple City employee before he went to the Community Development Commission.
I'm actually particularly excited about being involved in this project and look forward to the partnership with the city. As Brian said, I started with the city back in 1984 as an intern and then worked as an assistant planner before going to the Community Development Commission. So this project has some special significance to me, particularly coming back here to the city to work on this great project. So we look forward to expanding the project, the library, which is definitely under capacity in terms of the need from what I've seen. So we're really excited to move this forward and look forward to the partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott?
My name is Pat McGee. I'm assistant director of Capital Projects and Facility Services for the County of Los Angeles Public Library. It's a long title. I wish I could figure out a shortened it. But on behalf of our county library director, I'm sure I can speak for the county supervisor, Supervisor Barker of the 5th District, that we really appreciate this partnership. You guys have worked really hard, especially Mayor Sternquist. I know how passionate you are about your city and Brian, his team. It's been, and our library team over here, Fred Hungerford, CDC, I can tell you all together, I think with all the work that we put into this project, it's going to be a huge success. And for the community of Temple City, win-win to the, the passionate people I saw tonight here, whether they're opposing something or whether they're in favor, they come out in support and I really appreciate the support of the community as well. So thank all of you and look forward to a successful project. Thank you.
Thank you. When do you think we can get it done? Finished?
We'll work on that for a refined schedule, ma'am.
Okay, moving on. Update from our city manager.
Couple of community events this weekend, color run on Saturday and a few other things, but considering it's 11:15, that'll conclude my report, Madam Mayor. That's okay.
Okay. Update from our city attorneys?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. Council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings, any?
There's actually the budget one. Yeah, you could, you could do that. Or I could add in.
Okay, well, I'll just make it quick. I just wanted to let you know that we did have one meeting, I believe it was last week? I've already forgotten because we were out of town. We have one more coming up and we hope to have it to the council-
May 30th.
May 30th. That's all I have. Unless you want to add anything?
No, that's, yeah, budget's coming.
It's coming.
Okay.
Just want to think, is there anything else I want to?
No one else?
No.
Okay. Item 15, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Mayor Protan?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes, thank you. I just want to point out to the public, I know we've lost a lot of them, but still be televised, but one of the items on our consent calendar tonight was the approval of the Senior Master Plan Advisory Committee, which commend our staff and I know our Parks and Recreation Department and the commission worked hard on this and I think it's a long time coming. It's a committee that will, of course, help us to make decisions regarding the senior population. It makes sense that we have a youth committee in the city, now we have a senior committee in the city and so we have a well-rounded advisory groups to watch out for all those in the community. So I look forward to working with them. We have 17 individuals on the advisory committee, many of whom I recognize, some I don't know. So that's good to get a lot of the people involved. It's one of the things that we've talked about for years is how to get more people involved and this is one of those ways. So I want to thank those who applied and those who have agreed to serve and so, and look forward to working with them on future projects. So Kathy Bros, our Parks and Rec directors here, so I'd like to thank her personally for her help in getting this together. So look forward to it. That's it.
Councilmember Fish?
Again, I wanted to thank the public for coming tonight and of Councilmember Chavez's comments about our senior project, I did, our senior committee, I did want to remind that a lot of the meetings will be open to the public. So if you want information or schedules on any of those meetings, please call City Hall, call our city clerk and she'll be able to get that to you. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Yu, did I ask you?
No. Well, I just wanted to let everybody know that the city council, most of us attended the Contract City Conference last weekend. It was a very great meeting and a number of us, Mayor Protan, Man, and Councilmember Fish, and myself and the city manager, we attended the Supervisor Barker's, an event with, an evening with the cities yesterday. We had a very good conversation with the supervisor as well as actually with a number of department heads. So just want to report that out.
Okay. Thank you. Item 16, reimbursement of expenses to city officials. There are none. Additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda? There are none. And we move to item 18. I would like to adjourn the meeting in memory of a colleague of, and city council member from the city of La Cuenada, Dave Spence. He works closely with Councilmember Chavez on the JPIA Executive Board and with me on the Los Angeles Library Commission and he passed away this afternoon. So we are in adjournment.